We'll call the meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wierig.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Mayor Protem, would you do the honors? One lines for the pledge.
Yes. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And do we have any changes? I think there were a couple items on consent that...
Yeah, I would request that items G and I be pulled from the consent calendar.
Okay. G and I, are there any other requests? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I just have one quick question. We have on discussion item number six, the ratification of the Ventura County fire. I'd like to pull that because that's one of the issues that we're going to be discussing through BEB, and I'd like to have the opportunity to flush it out a little more and then bring it back to council.
Okay. Is any objection to that? Okay, fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
Also, we had the change in the recommendation for, excuse me, I believe it was item four H, which is the appointment of the committee member in alternate to the Ventura County Transportation Commission.
Oh, right, you're correct.
So, asked to pull that off the consent calendar, there's a slight modification in the recommendation to only appoint the primary as the alternate has withdrawn.
Okay, fine. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so ordered. So which items, Bill, did you want to?
Well, we have public communications first.
Oh, pardon me. You are correct. We have a...
And more.
Good, thank you for the... This is under public comment? Okay, good. We do have a water presentation. Do we normally do that before or after public comment? Traditionally, is there a...
Let's do public comment first.
Let's do public comment.
Okay. Okay, we've been asked to do public comment first, so... I have Lily Vasquez. Lily, if you will come forward, and then there's Mimi Elaine, if that's correct pronunciation.
Yes.
Yeah, you can come up. We have a little chair up here in front, you could be what we call on deck, that'll move everything along, so... Okay, Lily?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lily Vasquez. I am 22 years old, and I was born and raised in Ojai. Tonight I would like to bring to your attention an incident that has traumatized me. On Tuesday, August 1st, at 10:00 PM, I was walking home from a friend's house on El Roblar in Miners Oaks. I was stopped by a police officer, Officer Matthew Keeter, who asked me if I was on parole. When I said no, he proceeded to ask me if I would step aside and then flash his light into my eyes. He said that my pupils looked dilated after he repeatedly asked me if I was on any type of drug or under the influence of alcohol. He asked to take my pulse. I cooperated the best I could and did what he asked because I felt I had nothing to hide, but I was very scared at that point. He then called another officer to come in. When he arrived, they repeated all the questions and tests. After they ordered me to put my hands behind my back, handcuffed me, and had me get into the back of their car, I was very upset, crying, and one officer told me, "Stop crying, you were 22 years old." After that, they drove me to the county government center where I was forced to take a urine test and wait. During this time, I had no way to call anyone, as they had taken my phone. After the test, which came back clean, they finally asked me if I had any eye problems. I do. I have a lazy eye that wanders if any objects are put too close to my face. I was finally driven back home at 1:00 AM. I'm sharing my experience with you tonight because I feel my rights have been violated. I don't feel safe walking on the street. I felt targeted in my own neighborhood by police whose job is supposed to protect me, not harass me. There was no excuse or reason for what Officer Keeter put me through. He had no reason to interrogate, intimidate, or detain me. On Thursday, August 3rd, I posted on Ojai Community Forum Facebook page about my experience. The post has received over 400 comments. The chief of police had made a public statement that I have filed a formal complaint with Ventura County Sheriff's Department. From comments on my Facebook post, I have learned that others in our community have had similar experiences with officers in and around Ojai. I need my voice to be heard. The actions of the police targeting innocent people in and around town are not okay, and their harassment needs to stop.
Mayor Johnston?
Thank you. Bill?
Just a couple facts I want to make sure I'm clear about. How many total hours from the time you were first approached to when you finally were able to, you know, you were brought back to Ojai? How many hours was that?
About, um, probably three hours.
Excuse me?
Three hours or two.
Three hours, okay. And you were asked to do a urine test?
Yes.
I understand that correctly?
Yes.
And did you, were there any other issues that were brought up by law enforcement other than the suspicion of substance abuse?
No.
And you were a pedestrian at the time, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lily.
Mayor, I just have one other question.
Lily, can you stay?
Did the officers ever indicate why they stopped you?
Um, well, when he, like, he said hello to me, and he said he was just starting conversation. Just after that, like, when I said hi back, he asked me to step aside, and that's when they started their tests.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would like to hear your comment. Lily, I want to applaud you because I know it takes a lot of courage to come behind the podium and, you know, address your experience. And there have been many people in the community that have had similar experiences, and this is very important. I would like a copy of your letter, and I want to make, and I'm going to discuss it with Chief Freihoff, who's not here tonight. And I know that he responded on Facebook, and he said that there are forms that, you know, that the public can fill out. But many, many people, women are, women, and especially people with disabilities and mental, you know, issues, either don't know how to fill out those forms, or they're afraid. Many are afraid. And there's been, you know, this is a nationwide trend, people getting picked up on, you know, without real, without grounds, just, just because, and I think we live in a culture where it's suspect to be walking at all, you know, especially at night. We tend, so I'm deeply disturbed that you had this experience, and I believe that our chief of police is sincere in wanting to address it. And I want to thank you for speaking out. You're very, very courageous to come to the podium and speak out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Mimi?
Yes.
And we have Michael Haley on deck.
I didn't realize I was going to be able to speak like this, so I didn't prepare anything, but...
That's okay.
I'm here to support Lily and mention that a similar incident happened to me with the same officer on May 4th. I was picked up at, approached at Chevron, where I often, I walk every morning before work to the club on Fox Street before I go swimming, stop there, have a cup of tea. He approached me, did a very similar thing that he did to Lily, and then freed me to go. I asked for his name, and he then, I left on foot, followed me down Fox Street, blocked me at the car wash, and continued to harass me in the similar way that he did Lily. He was going to take me to Ventura. It turned out there was a female deputy in Ojai. He was not going to check that. I was over an hour late for work. I had to open the shop. But my deeper concern is, I would have let this go, first of all. I filed a formal complaint about five days after that happened to me, but I realized after the incident, he had, when he approached me, he had said, "I have never seen you before." And I was kind of thrown off by the whole event, but I realized afterwards that he had actually walked in my shop the week before, didn't introduce himself, went to the back of the wall, kind of stood there, walked out, said, "Nice shop," for no reason. Wasn't shopping, was in uniform. And there were a few presences after that arrest, or detainment, rather, where I felt his presence was not savvy. I felt I was being a little bit stalked, honestly. That's why I filed the complaint. I did tell this to the chief, who was very great, honestly. But I just want to make sure there's not a bigger problem going on here, and that's my deep concern. And when I saw that for Lily, excuse me, I felt really badly, you know, because it's traumatic. It is a trauma when you're innocent.
Okay. Thank you, Mimi. I appreciate you coming down and sharing that. Michael Haley with our librarian, Ron. I always butcher your last name, so...
Can I make one comment?
Yes, sir, Bill.
I plan on bringing up this issue, just to let the audience know later on, on either the general manager comments or future agenda items. I think there's some questions I want to ask, but that's appropriate for later on and not during public communication. I just want to let the audience know that.
Right, and on that same topic of the last two people, I have received an email on a third issue. I don't know if it's the same officer, but something that Chief Freihoff is going to look into. We will not, we're not ignoring it, nor is the sheriff, so, Michael, you may.
All right, thank you. Good evening. All right, well, I'm here to talk about something quite different. Here in reference to last week's planning commission meeting, I went, I'm opposed to the tap room, the beer tasting room, that's being proposed next to the Ojai Coffee Roasting Company. My concern that I wanted to raise here tonight is that during the course of the evening, the planning commission and Mr. Summers, our attorney here, pointed out to me that the city has no control over what kind of business goes in a particular spot, that the city can only, you know, they have a planning guidelines, and if a business meets the guidelines, then in it goes. They can't say, "Well, we've got too many bars." You know, one of the planning commissioners pointed out that there were 20 alcohol-serving businesses between Topa Mountain Winery and that location there at the Dry Cleaners. That's a lot of alcohol-serving businesses. My overall, my bigger concern is tourist-serving businesses versus local serving. I don't feel like we have enough local-serving businesses downtown. Feel like, you know, one business after the next is a wine tasting room, beer tasting room, brewery. These are all tourist-serving businesses. We went through, you know, the whole STR battle, and then the OTID, and there's another front in this concern. Another issue we have to deal with is that if we're continually opening tourist-serving businesses, we're saying, "That's who we want here. That's what we're becoming." There's very little extra capacity in Ojai, so, but the thing I wanted to bring up is that we have no base, we have no way to control that. Even if we decided, "Look, 20 alcohol-serving businesses is enough for the downtown quarter, we can't stop it." I mean, I started thinking, "What if I wanted to open a Hooters?" You know? And I met all the planning guidelines. Can you not say no to that? You know, your awning's too big, I guess, would be the only way to stop it, but that's a problem, and you know, there's, there's, there's other cities that have...
Well, it's a formula business.
Well, okay, so I'll call it Mini Hooters, and I won't be part of the franchise for Ojai. You could do something like that. It's ridiculous. Community wouldn't want it. I think we're getting to the point with, my point is, a serious one, which is that we're getting to the point where we're doing things that are against our own values, and we don't have a way to stop them. And other cities, and I sent you all an email, it just was right before the meeting, but in there I pointed out that the city of St. Helena, they flat-out won't allow tourist-serving businesses at all in their downtown. It's been like that for 20 years. That would be too extreme for Ojai. I'm not trying to say we should do that, but we need to have some pathway so that we can have some control over it. And you can pass those things. You can make that a zoning ordinance, and I think that it's time that we need to start to think about that.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Ron Solorsano, is that close?
That was great.
That was? Okay, good. I'm building my confidence, Ron.
All right, well, thank you, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsano. I'm the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. I wanted to speak with you tonight just quickly about some of the events we have coming up at the Ojai Library. To begin, we're wrapping up a very successful summer reading program at the library. We had hundreds of participants, both children and adults, taking part online, winning exciting prizes, having a lot of fun. And it was a great time, encouraging people to read, and having some of the kids come out and participate in some amazing activities. We had, we built lava lamps, we built rocket launchers, gumdrop bridges, and more. It was a lot, a lot of fun. Even with all of that behind us, though, we still have some pretty special events lined up for the next month. This coming Saturday, on August 12th, at 1:00 PM, we're going to be introducing our customers to Cloud Library, which is a new resource that we have, offering eBooks and digital audiobook titles together in a single app. Staff are going to be on hand on that Saturday in order to help customers get set up, and those who are present are going to be able to enter a drawing for a chance to win a free Kindle Fire tablet. The following week, on August 19th, Saturday, we have a local author who's going to come in to give a reading on her book titled Presenting for Humans: Insights for Speakers on Ditching Perfection and Creating Connection. Her name is Lisa Braithwaite, and she's going to be presenting at 1:00 PM. And then later that same day, at 3:00 PM, we're going to have the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom holding a screening and a discussion of the film Seeds of Time, which is a documentary dealing with issues of climate change and food security. And the next one's pretty fun. As I'm sure you've heard, there's going to be a solar eclipse coming up on Monday, August 21st. The Ojai Library is setting up to have eclipse glasses on hand in order for live viewing of the partial eclipse, and we are also going to be streaming video of the total eclipse in our meeting room starting at 9:00 AM. So this is looking to be a pretty, a pretty phenomenal event there, and we would love to have anyone who's interested join us for the viewing. The last thing I want to mention is that next month in September is going to mark the start of the fall series for our CSU Channel Islands lecture series. We're going to start with a talk on cultivating mindfulness with psychology professor Dr. Kristi Martinez, and that's going to be on September 9th. We're going to have one lecture per month through the month of December. Each one will be on an interesting and exciting topic. And that's all I have for now. Thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions or you want to know more about our events, you can contact the library, or you can visit www.vencolibrary.org, and thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Only question I have is about the rocket launcher.
Unfortunately, I wasn't there for that one, but I hear it was great. I hear we had sent at least one onto our roof.
Popular this week, or at least...
Ron, you put all your events in the Ojai Valley's calendar?
We do send press releases out to the OVN. They usually do pick them up and put them into the Around Our Valley section. We also have an online calendar on our website, as well as a Facebook page and a Twitter account for the county library.
Uh-huh. Great, great programs.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
One quick comment. I just want to say that my granddaughter has pronounced your favorite library, joining the playground and the ice cream shop. She's spending the summer with us, so she had a great time.
That is excellent. We love to hear that. Thank you so much.
And Brian Akins.
Walked in the door and got tapped. Brian Akins, I'm from Oakview, walked in the door and got tapped to do the museum report tonight. It's a good thing. We just this, last Sunday, had David Mason appreciation drop-in. It was kind of a kickoff leading up to the celebration, which will be September 10th at Libby Bowl. We want to thank the storytellers, people who have the bowl reserved Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for giving the bowl, making the bowl available to us after 1:00. And so the committee will meet and set that exact time this upcoming Wednesday for everybody who's getting false information online. But again, we had a wonderful event. We, Donna and I guested, 85 to 90 people that showed up. I got to see a picture of Larie Bjornstedt 35 years ago. Was fabulous, and she was there, I think.
Still fabulous.
She's a little older. She's still fabulous. So it was great to see her, great to see everybody that showed up. A big thank you to them. The museum is participating in the Third Fridays Downtown, which is Friday, August 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30. The museum will be open and will be free. That will give you the chance to see the exhibit that's going on. If you came Sunday, you got a twofer. You got to see the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy exhibit that's going on, and as well as to see the items that were set out in, for David Mason. And let's see, so we have a town talk that's coming up August 20th, Sunday, 4:30 to 6:00, our usual town talk time. Having interviewed most of the principals, along with John Brosomly and Cricket Twitchell, the buildup to what we have now is interesting, enlightening, and the goals they have are theirs to share. Weather-wise, the walking tour does not take place in August and September. For those of us who live here, we know why. So, again, just a promo for September 10th celebration. I keep chasing down people using that M-word. It's a celebration, not a memorial. That's for the Ojai Valley News, who's behind me, who put up that headline this morning. So, again, September 10th at Libby Bowl, we had a lot of people that said, "I was unable to be there Sunday, but we're planning on being there on the 10th." So, again, we have a very comprehensive committee that's talking about it, and we look to have very special moments, including parts of the oral history, two-and-a-half-hour oral history that Larie Bjornstedt, Joyce Robinson, and I did with David Mason. Thank you very much. We'd also like to thank those people that contributed, friends of David, to help us with the fee for reserving the Libby Bowl, so onward.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, I believe that concludes the public comment portion, and we have a presentation.
No, we're not there yet.
Come on up. This says consent on it, but...
What's that?
I have a note that they put consent on, but I don't need to give you consent. You're a consenting adult and our valley expert. Thank you for coming this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you. It's been a while, and I think you probably have all forgotten about water by now, but I think it's, it's past due time to bring it back into focus to see what's going on. And the first question I have for you is, can the Ojai Valley run out of water? And of course, it can. Will the Ojai Valley run out of water? And the answer to that is, who knows? We can't predict the weather, we can't predict all the circumstances. Need to remind you that our only source of water is local rain. And when I say about, when I talk about local rain, I'm talking about if we get 10 inches of rain a year, it doesn't matter, except to cut down the dust and to get the soil wet. 10 inches of rain a year does not contribute to basin storage or Lake Casita's storage. So how close to Water Armageddon were we last year before we got our fine rain? I think we were close. Both basins were at near-record low levels, and Lake Casita's was at 35% of capacity. So where are we today? Here's the California drought monitor as of July 25th, 2017. And if you check out Santa Barbara, Ventura Counties, and a couple of other areas, we're in a moderate drought, still in a moderate drought, and as the summer wears on, it's probably going to get worse. How about rainfall? Here's our rainfall chart through March 22nd of this year. And in the mountains, we got pretty good rainfall, 30 to 40 inches. On the southern slopes of the San Ynez Mountains, the drainage into Lake Casita's, we got 30 to 40 inches. That contributed to the runoff into Coyote Creek, Santa Ana Creek, and of course, the Matilahaw rainfall contributed to the Ventura River flow, which contributed to the upper Ventura River groundwater basin, and also, we were able to divert some water in the canal to Lake Casita's. Nordoff Ridge got excellent rainfall, 37 inches. Downtown Ojai got around 27, and our average is 21, so we were a little above average in downtown Ojai. And that rainfall on Nordoff Ridge and in downtown Ojai certainly contributed to the increase in storage of the Ojai groundwater basin. Here's this old chart I keep throwing up in front of you, and we'll probably keep going with that until you tell me to quit. We have a little jog up there at the end, in the 2016 to 2017 area. The blue curve on top is Lake Casita's storage. You can see the five previous years, we had a steady decline in Lake Casita's storage, and we lost 117,000 acre-feet from the lake in those five years. About 50% of the capacity of the lake, we lost during the drought. And folks, we don't have 117,000 acre-feet in the lake right now. So if we, if we're going to see another five years of drought, we're going to have a problem. So the data for Lake Casita's, peak storage occurred on March 27th at around 111,000 acre-feet. Storage on 12/31/16 was 89,000 acre-feet, so the lake level rose around 22,000 acre-feet this winter, about one year's worth of water. So the data as of August 7th yesterday, the lake storage is down to 103,000 acre-feet, 42.2% of capacity. The decrease in storage since March 27th is a little over 8,000 acre-feet. Probably around 1,000 acre-feet of that was evaporation. So, the way I figure, we've got about six to seven months before we're back to where we were in December of last year. I'm predicting if we, if the drought continues, from here on, that we've got about six to seven months before we're back to 89,000 acre-feet. Stage four drought reduction will come in about December of 2018, a little over a year from now, and stage five would come in, in about a year and a half, if we don't get rain above 10 inches a year. And right now, out of water is projected to be in February of 2022, which is about four years from this coming February. Sediment? I keep talking to you about sediment. I've talked to you about sediment since December, January of last year. I keep bugging Lake Casita's, and the good news is, they keep talking to me. The bad news is, they keep saying, "Well, we need a couple of more weeks because we have questions for the contractor." So we still don't have any information about sediment in the lake. And as a reminder, whatever sediment we have in the lake reduces the published lake volume. The last I got was that maybe this Friday, we're going to have something definitive, so we'll see. Let's talk about the Ojai groundwater basin. The little rubber ducky there shows where we ended up this year. If you go down to the bottom axis, we had about 27 inches of rain in downtown Ojai. We accumulated about 14,000 acre-feet into the Ojai Basin as a result of that. This particular curve is from a theoretical study by Daniel B. Stevenson Associates. They were contracted by the OB-GMA to come up with a theoretical curve on basin accumulation versus rainfall. So we're a little above the curve here, but you can see the trend. And also, I'd like to point out that our average rainfall is 20 inches a year, and that would contribute about 7,000 acre-feet. And if you look further down at 10 inches of rain, we get essentially no accumulation in the basin. So here's a chart of a key well at Carney and Grand. That key well has risen, the depth of water has risen probably around 100 feet with the rainfall we've had over the winter. A lot of wells have come back online because we're up that 100 feet. Ojai basin use, I'm thinking that with the higher water levels, basin use is going to increase from what it has been. During the drought, it was around 3,000 to 3,500 acre-feet per year coming out of the basin. In 2012, when there was more water in the basin, we were extracting around 5,000 acre-feet a year. So if the basin extractions kick up because of the higher water levels, at 14,000 acre-feet in the basin, we may have three years' worth of water in the Ojai Basin if the drought continues. Ojai basin fees, I think I've reported before that the OB-GMA was in some financial difficulty. They've raised their extraction fee from $15 an acre-foot to $25 an acre-foot, and plans are in the works now to levy, also levy, a wellhead fee for each well owner of around $65 per quarter. And these changes in fees are projected to increase revenues by 250% for the OB-GMA, and in four years, they should have a reserve fund of $90,000 based on these fee increases. fee increases. The upper Ventura River groundwater basin is in great shape. All four wells are online at the Ventura Water District, and they're predicting if a drought returns, they've got two to three years' worth of water in that basin for the VRWD. Miners Oaks Water District, they've got all four wells back online. If you remember during the drought, Miners Oaks had no wells online, and Ventura River Water District only had one well online. Hope. So what's the hope for the future? Well, we've talked about rain as our only source. I think we really need folks to start thinking about different sources or new sources of water. And so here are Angelo's four items that may be worth looking at. State Water Project tie-in, we've talked a lot here about that. I talked to the engineer at Ventura Public Works this past week about this alignment study. The final report is due out in May of 2018. Right now, there are two alignments being considered. The connection is pretty much set to be at the Springville Reservoir in Camarillo, which will tie into Cuyegus Municipal Water District piping. They're looking at bringing that pipe across the Highway 118 Bridge to Saticoy across the Santa Clara River. There are some problems with that. And then just south of that, they're looking at tunneling underneath the Santa Clara River and putting in a pipe to Saticoy. So those are the two alignments under consideration right now. Both have pros and cons associated with them. Ventura is still proceeding with increasing their piping size westward across Ventura to 30 inches. Those are capital improvement programs that are in progress right now and moving forward. I've mentioned to you before that we've got a 30-inch line from Casitas down to Olive and Ramona, and I've been a real proponent of hooking up all the way so that we have a connection to state water via this system. And I mentioned that to the engineer at Ventura Public Works, and she responded with a hearty chuckle about that ever occurring. So I don't know what to read into that chuckle, except that perhaps she feels that no way in the world is that connection going to happen, which I think is regrettable. I think it would be important to be able to pump water, if we have a chance, to get at state water to pump it up the hill if we need it. I don't know anybody that's out there in Casitas or in Ventura Public Works that is in support of pumping water up the hill to Ojai. So if anybody else is interested, they probably should step forward and start raising some dust about it. So at this point, I don't see that, I don't see that moving forward. The other project are the Matilahaw Formation horizontal bores. These are horizontal wells that are going to go into the San Ynez Mountains north of Lake Casitas. Casitas Municipal Water District is really behind this project even in its early stages. They have already invested over a quarter of a million dollars into this, into the study of the horizontal bores. And in my opinion, there are pretty good environmental and technical issues associated with these horizontal bores, a lot of unknowns. How much water can we get? What is going to be the recharge rate of these basins? There are some unknowns. I don't think a test drilling could occur any sooner than in two years. So this is in progress. Casitas is behind it. Casitas is pushing it, and there's a presentation tomorrow at the board meeting at Casitas. So if anybody's interested in what's going on, you may want to attend that meeting tomorrow. I intend to go see what they have to say about this project. Here's something that I think is a possibility is a Santa Barbara connection. Santa Barbara is currently connected to the state water project. Santa Barbara has an operational desal plant. It's working at around 3,000 acre feet a year right now, and that plant is expandable to 10,000 acre feet a year. They're moving on a potable water reuse program to cut their reliance on other sources of water, and they're quite willing to sell us water. All we need is a pipe. And I think any sort of piping between Carpinteria and Casitas, again, is not going to be politically favorable in our current climate. But I think it's another option that offers some advantages. I know we've got to pump up, pump the water up the hill. We've got to pump the water up the hill from Ventura. But folks, if we're looking at only rain, we need to perhaps think outside the box. And of course, I've mentioned this before, desalination. The Cuyegus Municipal Water District has a great study out about putting a plant at the Port of Wainimi. It's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to take a lot of years, and there's some things to overcome there. But desalinated water does not require rain or the state water project. Statewide, people are favoring desalination more and more, I believe, and technology is changing rapidly. In filter technology, filter membrane technology is changing rapidly. 15 years from now, I think the technology is going to be far better than what it is now. So my point is, why don't we get started now in looking into desalination? And by the time we get there, we may find that plant footprints are reduced, we have lower maintenance costs, and energy required is, has been really reduced because of the improvement in technology. So my opinion is seawater desalination, maybe it's time to get on board and get something started. I'd like to talk about what I perceive as threats to us, and I put three threats together. And of course, the first threat is no rainfall. And when I say no rainfall, I'm talking about 10 inches a year. We need more than 10 inches a year to make a difference. If we have less than 10 inches a year, it's going to settle the dust and not contribute to any basin or lake storage. Now, before I go to this next threat, people cannot boo or throw something or set a lynch rope outside the quarters here. What I try to do is portray this steelhead trout as a Now, this poor steelhead trout is really not to be held responsible for what's going on in the steelhead community. The people that are trying to manage the steelhead trout is where we have an issue, a potential issue. I'm not a steelhead trout hater. I just think we need to pay attention to what's happening and how our water is being regulated to preserve steelhead in the Ventura River. That's all I'm saying. We need to pay attention because I think you're going to see, and it's already been occurring, if you look at the San Antonio spreading, San Antonio Creek Spreading Grounds, we had water pouring down San Antonio Creek this past year. Not one gallon was diverted into the Spreading Grounds, and it's largely because of steelhead considerations for San Antonio Creek. So I think we need to strike a balance. We need to find a balance. But we've got to pay attention to what's going on in steelhead preservation because I think we've only seen the tip of the iceberg for water being moved around to keep this fellow happy. And then the other threat is that we're going to continue to keep our heads buried in the mud and not really pay attention to what's going around, going on around us. We need to be paying attention. So what can we do? We need to show up at these meetings. We need to read what's out there. We need to watch where decisions are being made for us in meetings like at Casitas tomorrow and in other meetings around the county that deal with steelhead. There are things we need to pay attention to. So we need to step up, stand up, and speak up while there's still time. As I mentioned, if we get into a five-year drought, again, we don't have the water. We don't have the water. There isn't water in the basin, and there isn't enough water in the lake to get us through another five years if the drought continues. So it may pour rain, who knows? But I'm saying, if we get into another five-year drought, we won't make it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
SZA.
Okay. Angelo, you've given us many excellent presentations on water sources and the charts and all of that, and I greatly appreciate it. But what I would like to see, if the council agrees, I feel like to balance that, we also need a presentation by someone who's really an expert on the ecology of the Ojai Valley and what we can do to retain water. We need, there are people right now who are planting, literally planting small forests. And a forest is different from, you know, trees that are spaced and isolated because it's the roots of the trees and types of grasses and plants that retain the water. So I mean, this morning, I got another thing in the mail for plant, for artificial lawns. That's the absolute worst thing that people can do is put in, not the worst thing, but one of the worst things, and these terrible drought, so-called drought gardens that don't sustain life. You see them everywhere. And it's really obvious that we, that we really need citywide education. I don't know where to start, but it's desperately needed so that we're not just, you know, the, what, if, when the rains come, we'll retain the water. If the rains doesn't come, we've, we've done our best, and we can conserve and ride it out if we have enough, you know, greenery to permeate the soil. We need to think in those terms now more than ever. So I hope that we can, city manager, get an expert, and I'll help you find one, you know, to balance this up because the public keeps hearing this, and there's other pieces to the water situation.
I agree with you. I think, I think more can be done in that area. The problem is, if you don't have the rain, there's nothing to capture. And that's, that's what I'm concerned about, is that if we get back into a drought situation of only 10 inches of rain or less a year, all amount of conservation is not going to help us. And obviously, we didn't spread an ounce of water going down San Antonio Creek this past winter. And that wasn't because people weren't willing to conserve or wanting to conserve. I think $2 million was put into those Spreading Grounds.
Uh-huh.
And they weren't utilized last year. And that's because the government, if you will, if you want to pick out a definition for government, said that no unless water reaches a certain level going across Grand Avenue, we're not going to allow you to divert water into your Spreading Grounds. So I think if we get rain, yes, we should do a better job of capturing it. I think we're doing a lousy job right now. So if we can, when it rains, if we can do a better job of capturing it, I think you're on the right track there. If it doesn't rain, no matter, no manner of conservation is going to save us.
Well, there, I mean, I'm not an expert in this field, but I do know that if people plant trees, and there's certain kinds of trees that would be, you know, more natural for this type of environment, planting trees is key because of the way it retains moisture. There's a whole process that we're only now just becoming, or, you know, laypeople are only becoming aware of. So I'll do some research on that.
I think it's a great idea.
It's beyond, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Bill, are we back on the air?
I was going to move, thank you, Angelo, and I was going to move approval of consent items 1A, B, C, D, E, F, J, and K.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, is there any objection to proving those? If not, okay, so ordered. We'll move that along. So which ones do we have pulled off? We've got...
G, H, and I.
Okay, so on G, we have pulled that. Are we going to pull that and continue it?
Well, there's a timely, there's a time issue there in terms of response. Mayor, Council, I think I circulated before the meeting this afternoon, and it's on everyone, Almedias, an expanded draft from, to incorporate some more detail in our grand jury response that Councilperson Haney, myself, and Mr. Spendero came up with. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, but I, for purposes of discussion, will move approval of the expanded draft.
Okay, we have a second?
Second, sir.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion on that? Yeah, thank you for the work you did on that, guys. That's much, much more positive to the grand jury. They'll like it, too. Okay, thank you. Well, any objection to, okay, if not, so ordered. Okay. Is it G? Is that...
That was G.
Oh, that was G. What about H?
There's a public comment on G, pardon me.
Oh, on G? There is?
That was the consent part.
Oh. Well, it's not, it's a, it's just... That's you, Angelo? Come on back up. I was trying to figure out why we had a consent item on, or you were on the consent agenda when you were making the presentation. Okay. Angelo?
It was very exciting to me to see the 2016-2017 Ventura County Grand Jury Final Report titled "Water Considerations for City Included" as an agenda item for tonight. This report was extremely well researched and well-prepared. We should not take it lightly, but seize this opportunity to work toward a secure water future, a secure future water supply for the Ojai Valley. This report, I believe, validates concerns that many of us in the Ojai Valley have had about running out of water due to lack of planning for catastrophic disruptions of water supplies, due to lack of drought plans that extend at least five years instead of three years, due to lack of conservation planning, as SZA mentioned earlier, during drought, non-drought years, due to lack of identification of potential water sources that are based on unfunded or unpermitted infrastructure. And I think this is critical. The grand jury is talking about other water sources that are unfunded and not permitted at this point. This response required by the grand jury from the City of Ojai gives the city a welcomed opportunity to advise the Casitas Municipal Water District where their urban water management plan is deficient in dealing with the water concerns of the Ojai Valley, particularly in the areas the grand jury mentions in their report above. In addition, Casitas Water Management Plan needs updating to take into consideration the new major development caused by the Golden State Water takeover. This completely changes the landscape in that urban water management plan since now this entire water system is under the purview of Casitas. These updates, I want to emphasize, are required now. The normal update cycle for an urban water management plan is five years. Because Casitas just came out with their appended or updated version in 2016. So by law, if you will, they can wait until 2021 before updating. That's five years. And what we were talking about, a five-year drought, we don't have time to wait for five years to have an updated or appended plan. Our immediate response to the grand jury should detail our intentions to request an immediate update to the Casitas Water Management Plan. And I think that's what this new piece of paper says. Our notification to Casitas should be professional and thorough. We should point out to the CMWD where their water management plan does not address the concerns of the grand jury for Ojai and request a timeframe for an update. We should implement regular follow-ups to the CMWD requesting that they complete the water management plan update as requested. The grand jury should be copied on all of our correspondence with the, with the CMWD concerning the grand jury report. We must keep the grand jury informed as to the action we are taking and to keep them apprised of the degree of cooperation that we are receiving from Casitas. These actions by the City of Ojai will fulfill our requirement to respond to the grand jury as they have requested by illustrating the action we have taken with Casitas to update their water management plan. Casitas must be held accountable for a timely update of their water management plan.
Okay. Thank you, Angelo. Okay, did we vote on that yet, or do we, hold on? Okay, good. And thank you for your work both on it and your comments to the public. It's...
Mayor, can I just make one quick comment on that?
Sure.
I just, for everyone that's, that's here and everyone that's listening, you need to go online and you need to get a copy of this report from the grand jury because it'll open your eyes to not only does Ojai have a problem, but the county of Ventura has a problem. And they address all of those concerns. It's just incredible reading, and it's important reading if we all want to be in this together. One of the questions, one of the concerns that they have is that the county cities actually come together and start discussing water from a county level versus this slice of the pie, only my city level. And I was talking to Mayor Johnson about it. I requested that we bring this up to the Ventura County Government's VCOG, and then I've initiated a dialogue that we agendize that, and we actually get the 10 cities and a supervisor who sits on that, on that board to actually start discussing water and discussing water from a county-wide perspective, not just our individual needs. So this report just plays right into that. I don't know who made the request to the grand jury to investigate water in the county, but God bless them.
All right. Thank you, Randy. For those of you who haven't followed this issue, we have, should have a special thanks to Angelo and that, the water group. We have some very knowledgeable people in the valley that are staying after this. We joked about a year ago, we sure hope we don't lose interest when the rains come. And so on the one hand, we were praying for rain. As soon as we got rain, you know, the, the level of intensity dropped precipitously. But these folks did not walk away and forget it. They're staying with it, and I think this is a... not walk away and forget it. They're staying with it. And I think this is a good contribution to the effort. And I have another one on one. Oh, Don, is this for this item? It just says item one. Is it Don Shook? Is Don?
She's on talk on 314.
Oh, okay. Help me with that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
You have H now.
So now we have the appointment to the Citizens Transportation Advisory Committee, and it was listed with two candidates, one for the regular position and one as our alternate. But the individual who was nominated for the alternate has asked that their name be withdrawn at least for now. So right now, the motion, if I have a motion from someone here, that it's Michael. Eric Hertzler?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? If not, any objection? If not, well, so ordered. Thank you. Unanimous. Okay, now we have what, we have one more?
I.
Can we pull something else up?
Item I.
Oh, I. Yes, item I.
Mayor Johnson, staff would recommend that we pull this item off. We need to do a little further tweaking and adjustment, so we'd like to do that and bring it back to council.
Okay. There's no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Okay, does that bring us to hearing time?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And this card was for two.
Oh.
Don's.
Oh, for two, okay.
Oh, here we go.
Ah, the mail. This is all on two. Okay, and I think we have now arrived at two. So I guess take the staff report, I guess is the proper order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our interim community development director, Matthew Winiger, is here to present the report. And we'll also be hearing from our city attorney, Matthew Summers. He'll be sharing some details on the proposed development agreement. Mr. Winiger?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The items before you this evening involve a reorganization of property located at 334 East Ojai Avenue. A portion of that property is actually owned by the City of Ojai. And the reorganization, which would be facilitated by a lot line adjustment, would reorganize the properties in such a way as to facilitate the redevelopment of the building that's located at 334 Ojai Avenue. So before you, for consideration this evening, is the lot line adjustments, I indicated, a development agreement, which is actually, includes the terms of the transaction, the business of the swap of the property concerning the city property, and a design review permit that was considered by the planning commission. The applicant is the Shanks Investment Group. They're represented by Mr. Ben Turner. And of course, as I indicated, the City of Ojai is also a party to this project as well. There's an existing building located at 334 Ojai Avenue. It's a very utilitarian block building. It is proposed for renovation. This project has come before the city council, the planning commission, and the historic preservation commission as a concept review item on the occasions that are indicated in your staff report. During the course of those concept reviews, the design of the building, the treatment of the building has evolved. Initially, the proposal was to essentially build upon some of the elements that are already part of the building, metal elements and what have you. At the recommendation and direction and comments of the historic preservation commission, the planning commission, and the city council, the applicant has redesigned the building. There are a couple of concepts that were considered by the planning commission. The applicant's representative will go through those in detail with you this evening. But the planning commission did elect to recommend, or actually did approve, and subject to your appeal this evening, an option which will be referred to as Option B. It does have elements and colors that are consistent with the design guidelines for the arcade area. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission level regarding the architectural elements of this proposal. And again, the applicant will make a presentation regarding those details. As I indicated, there is a lot line adjustment. There is a 10-foot-wide paseo or public walkway that provides access from a parking lot to Ojai Avenue. It basically bisects a vacant property and the building, the property on which the building is located. The reorganization will shift the paseo to one side to facilitate a combination of the vacant property with the building property, which will allow the building to offer potentially restaurant uses and outdoor dining. The city attorney has prepared the development agreement and has worked with the applicant's representatives. Mr. Summers can make any remarks that he chooses regarding that. But that does conclude my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to try and answer questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add to Mr. Winiger's comments, so what's before you is a development agreement along with the underlying planning permits for the project. As noted, this is required because the project proposes to be located on both privately owned land and city-owned land. We prepare the development agreement draft before you tonight after prior direction, when this matter was brought to the council twice, for initial, okay, looking at it or not okay, looking at it, approval, but not final approval, of course. The development agreement is necessary because the parcels of landed issue are a Neapolitan sandwich of sorts, left, middle, right. At the moment, the left and the right are privately owned and the middle is publicly owned. That's the current, present brick walkway. The proposal is to essentially swap the brick walkway to the far left, if you're looking at it standing on Ojai Avenue, and then put together the two private parcels. So you'd have one city-owned parcel on the left, the same width, the nine feet wide, and then the remaining would be the privately owned parcel combined together. What's proposed is a like-for-like swap with a couple of requirements to be on the developer, built into the development agreement, five-year term. The developer must build and maintain a three-foot separation wall between the walkway and the private parcel, which will be, as will be described in detail by the developer in terms of the design, would be the edge of the patio. Also, a green screen to go in front of but not attached to the wall with Bonnie Lou's, also to be built and maintained by the developer. That would be on the city's property, on the paseo, but structured, I think they put them on hinges so that it can be opened to maintain or paint or deal with the Bonnie Lou's wall, but close it back to have the kind of the modern green screen, the second instance of the wall. That's also proposed, again, will be built and maintained by the developer. The city wouldn't be responsible for that. They'd also be required to replace the paving materials with the same, either the exact same bricks or similar bricks if they can't maintain the exact same bricks. The development agreement requires approval by ordinance. It is a legislative act. You have full discretion to accept it or not because the project is proposing to use the city's land. It's different than the typical project where you're looking at solely applying the findings to the code on a private property. Here, they're seeking to do a project on the city's property, thus you have a much freer hand, both on approval or disapproval, or conditions and on design, as will be discussed later. The development agreement ordinance also approves the final proposed combined parcel, the private parcel, notwithstanding its lack of compliance with the subdivision standards for a parcel in the C1, the commercial zone. In particular, it is too, it's too small, and the lot coverage would be too great, and the setbacks are inadequate to meet the current standards. The proposal would approve, if approved, the ordinance would approve the project, notwithstanding those three standards, as is allowed for development agreement under the zoning code and under state law. That reflects the fact that the, if the council so agrees, there's greater public benefit from the project and from combining the two parcels together than from requiring, leaving otherwise substantial parcels as existent. Now, it creates, again, the opportunity for the council to require conditions or additional requirements that would improve the project from the council's perspective. The proposal, in terms of the recommendations and the processing tonight, is the public hearing and the first main decision. If approved tonight on the resolution, staff recommends that the ordinance come back for first reading next time and then second reading thereafter with any adjustments to be made on the development agreement, depending, of course, on the council's action tonight. And that'd be a public hearing at the next meeting, followed by consent for second reading, again, if the council directs to move forward, and available for any questions.
Mayor Johnson.
Bill.
I want to be, I want to state something for the record, make sure everyone's clear on this, because I think I heard Mr. Winiger use the word "appeal."
Oh, yeah, that is incorrect.
It's not correct because, my understanding, you correct me if I'm wrong, because we're involved with the lot line adjustment as a council and the development agreement, everything associated, including the design review permit, has to be approved by council.
That is correct.
And if this had not involved a development agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, or a lot line adjustment, the only way it would get to council is if it was appealed to council from a planning commission decision. But we are not looking at an appeal hearing tonight on any aspect of this because of the nature of the situation. Is all correct?
The one caveat is that the commission does have the power to approve a lot line adjustment on their own. So if the project required only a lot line adjustment and a DRP, it would have been PC approval, appeal to council.
Okay.
But as is, you're completely correct.
Because it's a development agreement.
Development agreement means the whole thing.
And it's not an appeal hearing. It's everything.
Correct.
Associated with the development agreement.
All permits are on your, all of the permits for the project are on the council's table for approval. The PC is a recommendation, not approval.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure my understanding and everyone at home and the audience was clear on that understanding. Because I think I heard him say the word "appeal."
He may have misspoke.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions?
I have a question. And the question I have, maybe it'll become clear when Ben Turner does his presentation. But I want to be crystal clear on the city-owned property and the public right of way. And so currently, the brick walkway, which is quite wide, is city property.
Yes. The city owns the brick walkway.
The lawn and the trees are...
The lawn and the trees between, the same width of Bonnie Lou's, from Ojai Avenue to the edge of the building, are private.
That's private.
Privately owned at the moment.
Okay, so...
At the, at the edge of the building and back?
Yeah, I know.
That's when it gets into the city's larger parcel.
The edge of the building and back, okay.
So in other words, if we look at, let's go to the visuals.
Well, my main question is, will the resulting public right of way be as wide, if we do the swap, as the current one? Because that's such an important pathway to that.
Yes, the proposal is that the walkway, if approved, will be the same width as it presently is.
Okay. And does, is there an option to not do a swap at all, but keep...
Yes, the council has that choice.
Exactly what we have and see if the developer can work with, you know, with the way it's currently set up. Because I looked at it for a long time.
The council has the choice to reject a proposed land swap and then direct it, the developer, come back with a proposal, which would probably entail a collection of variances to allow a land use to be split across two parcels that aren't connected to each other.
Okay.
But it's theoretically possible to do, and that is very much the council's choice.
Okay, thank you. That's really good clarification. Thank you.
Are there other questions? I have one question. Matt, when I first heard about this several months ago, I was under the impression that there was going to be a land exchange. Is that still...
Yeah, the land exchange is swapping the existing city-owned parcel in the middle for the equivalent amount of land out of the private parcel on the left.
And the lot line adjustment comes into play how?
The lot line adjustment is to readjust the parcel lines to match the final ownership so that the end result of the lot line adjustment would be two parcels out of these present three, where there's one parcel on the left that would be the city-owned parcel, and then the other two parcels on the right would be part of the existing private parcel, our current parcel, and the remaining private parcel, all combined into one.
Right, so...
And then the city's parcel, last nuance to point out, the city's parcel, at the moment, is not standalone. It ties back to the entire arcade slash parking lot. That's all one big parcel.
Right.
So we'd be separating it, moving it over, and then attaching it back.
So it's not exactly an exchange. There's an actual change in the size of one parcel?
The net is the same, the city would own the same net land area. So we're, it's not exchanging, I get parcel A, you get parcel B. We're adjusting the parcel lines, but the square footage owned by the city would be the same in the end, is presently removed.
Right. And is there the intention to remove the trees that already exist?
The proposal would involve removal of all the trees. And I believe they're going to replace some number of trees. I'll let the developer speak to that. And that gets to one of the points that the council has the choice.
Okay, and that was acceptable to the planning commission, I guess.
The planning commission was okay with the removal of the trees.
Right, because it's going to be, if we don't get a larger piece for the city and keep the trees, we end up not having as much room for the paseo, or at least usable paseo. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
To summarize the planning commission's considerations, they looked at it as, and I'm paraphrasing, and admittedly it was 6-1. It wasn't unanimous. Their sense is that combining the two parcels together by moving the city's paseo to the left creates a more viable parcel and thus creates an opportunity to see some new businesses. But the price of that is the loss of the trees and that kind of miniature park-type space.
Based on this proposal, but not necessarily the only way to do it.
Oh, certainly. It's not the only way to do it. It's the proposal presently before you.
Okay, so now, what, the applicant's presentation before we open the hearing, or do we open the hearing and have the applicant?
I would just, unless you have some comment. I'd say just opening the hearing and then he could perhaps be the first speaker.
Okay. Okay, so the public hearing is open, and Ben, are you...
Evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Turner, and I've got a picture-heavy presentation tonight with the PowerPoint and these boards, so I'm going to skip through the pictures quickly. Maybe you could call out if you want me to stop, go back, pause, whatever. I wanted to address first this discussion we've just been hearing about the alleyway to clarify a couple of things. One is that if the city denied the, as proposed, the development couldn't proceed in the same way because you can't exit a building with food and drink that was generated inside the building and cross the city property to get to another parcel. The ATF and environmental health just don't allow that.
Could you clarify that? I didn't understand that.
So if, when we, if a restaurant was operating or a cafe was operating, or a business that was serving alcoholic beverages was operating in the building, you could walk outside to an enclosed patio that is contiguous with that building, but you can't step off the property and then start crossing a city property with an alcoholic beverage or with food that was served from that building and crossing city property to eat it somewhere else on another parcel.
But don't people do that all the time?
Not legally, no. That's why we have signs up. If you've been to a beer garden maybe, and it will say, "No drinks beyond this point," because the moment you step off that property, suddenly you're wandering around with an alcoholic beverage in your hand, which is probably breaks city law.
So are you saying that the option of keeping the current design is not an option for you? You know, if you had your, and this may be a premature question, but if you had your patio where the brick is, and then you had a strip of greenery, and then you had a pathway for, I'm having a hard time visualizing how people are trapped in there.
Oh, I guess that doesn't... They're trapped because if they want to walk across a city-owned alleyway with something that they've purchased on a private lot, then once you step off that property onto the city property, you've broken the law for one, if you've got an alcoholic beverage in your hand, and two, for environmental health. The environmental health department, when they're plan checking food preparation buildings and the commercial kitchens, they can't have a dining area which is off property that you walk across portion of the city property to get to another property to continue eating your food. Because they want to see food prepared at one place, and then the waitresses and waitstaff walking still on that property to serve the food to the customer and not exiting the property and going somewhere else. They don't have any idea how far you'd be going, and they don't do it case by case. They just have a rule. It's served on property.
But if the people just stayed put with their food and drink, it would be fine?
Inside the building, they could, and they could if it was a smaller patio, but that's not the presentation at the moment. That's not the proposed plan.
I hate to tie this up, but I just see people breaking that law everywhere. So, okay, we'll move on.
If I could offer one clarification, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The rule that Mr. Turner's referring to is for liquor service and for waiter service. Waiter service can't cross another, can't leave the parcel, can't leave the establishment, and liquor has to be in a contained establishment, can't cross city property. Takeout food, however, could be done. They could sell take- done. They could sell takeout food on the one parcel. You walk across the city parcel, and they have tables and chairs set up on the other parcel. That would be lawful. It may not be the same amount of recovery that they're seeking in the same, it isn't what they're proposing, but that nuance would be lawful.
Other questions?
Okay. So here are the first historic photo. I want to just give you some background of what this building used to look like in the 1930s. We've got the 1940s here. This building has had a lot of different uses, and we are trying to recognize that history, that unique history, as part of the architecture. So we've got ice cream stores, we've got clothing stores. And I wanted to bring this to your attention, the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So new work should be differentiated from the old, and each property shall be recognized as a physical record of its time, place, and use. Changes that create a false sense of historical development, such as adding conjectural features or architectural elements from other buildings, shall not be undertaken. I brought this up because I didn't want to create a scheme that competed with the arcade, or try to create a fake sense of history, or a building with a facade that never existed. We feel that this building had its own story, its own unique style, that didn't clash with the arcade, that complemented it. Also, sections of the municipal code, and I'm just going to read the highlighted sections here. This does not mean that the literal copying of existing styles, but rather the maintenance of appropriateness and harmony in relation to the existing buildings of traditional significance in the area, and that when talking about the Libby Park, the arcade, and the post office, talking about the visual prominence of these features. So we've got a larger historical landmark building next to this small building which faces East Ohi Avenue. And what we are being informed not to do is to do not compete and detract from the arcade. So existing photos. Looking at the building in the front there, the small building. The rear building is a CMU, which stands for Concrete Mason unit. It's just a concrete block finish at the moment. Looking down the brick alleyway, as was discussed, the alleyway will be the same width, but it will be pushed adjacent to Bonny Lou's. All those bricks will have to be picked up by hand, hand-placed back where they were. If we break them, we replace them. The green wall that has been discussed would go against, actually just off the wall. We can't attach anything to it because it's a landmark building. It belongs to somebody else. But this self-sustaining green wall would stand up there, and we will be paying for the maintenance of that and the walkway as well for the first five years. Looking towards East Ohi Avenue from the back of the plaza.
Can I go back to that slide that you just, where you were, you showed that strip?
Yes.
Okay, just beyond that strip are tall trees that add shade, okay? And I have a great deal of difficulty with removing those trees. Is there a way to, is there a way to preserve the trees?
Sure. Yes. But it's not to do the project as proposed. The trees that are there, I'm afraid I don't have the name of them in my head.
They're polycarpus.
Right.
So they were described to me as a volunteer tree, and we were tasked with replacing them with better examples of a street tree that is consistent with, you know, what we'll be seeing around here if the city was putting them in, and also the green wall. So in actual fact, there'd be an increase in vegetation, not a decrease overall.
Yeah, that will take several years. And it's, I went at the peak heat, and those trees were amazing, it was amazingly cool in that little pocket because of the trees. It's just a consideration as we weigh the possibilities. Thank you.
So this is the depiction of the two lots with the city-owned parcel. Interesting side note, for me anyway, doing the research on this property, the city-owned parcel is a very large parcel, which, that's just one tongue of it, and it goes back behind the plaza. And tracking down the records was very, very difficult. In fact, we never obtained complete records. Nobody has complete records of the city-owned parcel. But this middle section that is now the alleyway actually did belong to the parcel, or the two parcels now that we're discussing as privately owned. It was one large parcel. I don't know whether money changed hands. I cannot find any records of that, but that was actually given to the redevelopment agency. I think it was back in the 70s. And there, we'd see what would happen. Same amount of land, it just moves over, and the mechanism has been chosen by the city of a lot line adjustment. Just a basic site plan showing the layout of the patio. I took some photos at night to, and this was, the reason for these photos was to highlight the lack of lighting. It doesn't meet the industry standard for foot candles per foot for safety. And so the reason I bring it up is that the photometric plan that we generated showed that we would actually have to add another light standard to bring that lighting up. And that would actually, would cast light upon Bonny Lou's wall at a level that would be typically above the city standards. But there's a good reason for it because it's for safety, and so staff gave their recommendation for that. The plant palette would be consistent across all the schemes that have been presented today. And the reason that we are bringing back these three schemes, just so the public know, is because it was requested by the city council that we bring all the schemes back in to go over them again. And so these are some of the architectural elements that would feature in the patio. You know, decomposed granite and gravel, and these California gold, the pavers trying to blend in a little bit to the arcade walkway, Gabian walls with, you know, natural stone encased, and planters with rusted steel edges. A colored rendering showing some of the layout of the plants and the benches inside the patio. And then I come to Scheme A. So I've duplicated these on these phone boards here, and I can switch between them as you see fit. Scheme A was rejected by the planning commission. Actually, it didn't come to vote. There were three options. Scheme A was to keep the existing galvanized steel, which is underneath the, what we call T-111, or wood siding on the front building. So when you peel that siding off, in fact, that's what it stands as of right now, the galvanized steel is exposed. Our proposal was to keep that galvanized steel, replace and repair as necessary, to add metal trellises that would be in a dark color. And then, as you can see from the color scheme, the galvanized on the front, and then an off-white at the larger rear building. So again, Scheme A would look like this from East Ohi Avenue. Again, you see the patio wall at the front, also in that off-white color. You can see one of those new trees in the background, and the green wall against Bonny Lou's. Scheme A looking from the back of the plaza. And then we move on to Scheme B. The differences with Scheme B is instead of leaving the galvanized metal that is removed, and a hard trowel plaster is added in a medium gray. Instead of the metal trellis, it is a wood trellis. And the railing is a slightly different style. And those are those trees. As you can see, again, everything else remains the same. In this scheme as well, the rear building that is currently, as I said, CMU, Concrete Mason unit, concrete block, would receive a coating of plaster to bring it more into harmony with the surrounding buildings. There's Scheme B from the front. This is also the scheme in the end that the applicant liked, and this was the scheme that was recommended by the planning commission. There isn't a lot of siding on the front of the building because of such a large window and a door. But as you can see, there's the darker trim, and there's the plaster tone, and the trellis is wood from the back. And then finally, Scheme C, which had some off-browns, and some, the canvas awnings were of a different color, still with the wood trellis, but choosing different colors for the awnings. And this scheme was voted on by the planning commission but rejected on the front and from the back.
Could you go back to the front? You know, I'm moving around because the easel's in the way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So is the front, you know, right now, there's a huge picture window in the front.
Yes.
What happens to that?
It stays the same. There's actually no changes to the architecture, the shape, the scale, the massing, the architectural details all remain the same. Effectively, all we're doing is, we're changing the colors and rehabbing the building. We're trying to rehab the inside of the building to set it up. We don't have tenants already. It's been about a two-and-a-half-year process. Even if we'd had tenants at the start, we'd have lost them by now anyway. So we don't have an exact, we've given use examples, and if that future use has to come back for another conditional use permit because of their use, then they'll be back on their own. We're just doing essentially a shell, the patio, the land exchange, setting it up to show it to tenants.
So people can enter through the front and side of the building?
Yes.
Okay. I was present at your planning commission meetings, but I want just to be real crystal clear.
So there's Scheme C from the back. And then, I'm going to make a few comments now. You know, the scheme chosen from the options by the planning commission was Scheme B, a scheme offered to improve the larger building with a coating of off-white plaster over the existing concrete block. The smaller front building would have the wooden T-111 siding removed and a plaster coat added in a mid-gray with a hard trowel finish and black trim. The patio has three wooden trellis, railings, and plastered walls, also in the off-white. From the plaza guidelines, I was going to read that, "One more subdued colors usually work best for overall building color. Darker accent colors are appropriate for trim, windows, door, and key architectural elements." And that's what the, this is another building, but darker trim on the front of the building on Schemes A and B was trying to do, was, you know, create a punch to highlight those elements that are original. And I wanted to urge you not to impose a fake or a faux style. The brown color scheme doesn't suit the shape and massing of the building. Doing so would not increase the appreciation or integrity of the historical arcade. It would in fact dilute its style by creating the exact situation the state guides us against, creating competing fake architecture that will only detract from the arcade's original aesthetic context. The scheme recommended for approval preserves the small-town character and history of this building. This building has its own story, perhaps not as grand as the arcade, but deserves to keep its soul while benefiting from a high-quality remodel that recognizes in the building's original design intentions. The plaza guidelines require us to promote design creativity and variation, as well as enhance community activity while preserving the individual character and remaining harmonious with the arcade plaza styles. I took some photos of the front of the plaza and the back to demonstrate that, color-wise, they have also chosen some colors which are not in earth tones, and we have dark trim. We have wood paneling. We have a lot of wood details that don't fit in with any mission theme. Remodeled buildings also that aren't plastered. More detailing of wood with different colors, a light lavender. Some interesting color choices. And from, I mean, this is my personal opinion, nothing I saw was obnoxious. Nothing I saw made me upset when I was looking at these colors. I think that's part of Ohi's character, is we do have some diversity even within the plaza, even on the frontage. Here, we've got some plaster, certainly not an earth tone. I liked it.
Where was that, that red one?
It was behind the arcade. It was from the rear. I don't know which business, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Some metal siding, actually, with black trim.
And a closet, yeah.
And some more colors. So that concludes, I believe, the pictures. If you've got any questions, or I could flip through the phone boards for you if you want to look at one particular scheme, and I can point out the colors to you.
Any questions?
No.
None right now, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we at that point where we take public testimony?
Yes.
Okay, let's see what we've got here. I've got Dawn. And we have Rosalie on deck.
Hi, I'm Dawn Shook. I'm 309 Mallory Way. That's where I live. When I first visited Ohi in 1980, I fell in love with the Mission Revival downtown city of Ohi. It moved me to join Ohi as a citizen six months later, and I was very, it was warm and welcoming downtown, and I was very happy with that. I now work at Ohi Valley Board of Realtors, which is right next door to the property at 334 East Ohi Avenue. After attending two recent planning commissioner meetings, I understood the Jeff Becker team will do a great job with the shabby-looking building. A lot line adjustment, moving the sidewalk, and greening of the Bonny Lou's wall were all discussed, and will be a part of the remodel. However, the colors of snowbound white, black trim, and gray concrete of the front building do not fit in our downtown corridor. They also do not follow the Ohi Arcade design guidelines, which have served us well for over 100 years. Navajo white stucco tile, brick, and wooden accents create the Mission Revival Ohi Downtown look. Its look is why we work and live, and others visit us in Ohi. "So quaint," they say. "Not like any other town in Southern California." Let me see. "Many other remodels have followed the Ohi Arcade Design Area Guidelines and have added interesting, beautiful Mission Revival-style renovations to complement our downtown corridor. Precedents of a modern style with colors that do not fit downtown will set standards of anything goes in our future. Please encourage the Becker team to follow the Arcade Area Design Guidelines to keep our downtown inviting as it has been for many years." Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Rosalie with Scott Eicher on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, council members, staff. I volunteered on the planning commission for the last three and a half years, half of which time I functioned as the chair. I understand how the approval process is supposed to work. I was the dissenting vote on this project because I believed it violated the Arcade Design Guidelines. I also believe the applicant's submission to the planning commission over two separate meetings was chaotic and confusing. Anyone who watched the meeting saw an embarrassing circus. I don't believe there was any real clarity as to what was eventually approved, nor was there any attempt to really dig into the details of this project, including what was happening with the trees or the land swap agreement. This chaotic environment was abetted by the interim community development director, Mr. Winiger, who told commissioners that we had wide latitude to interpret the design review guidelines, and who did nothing to stem the chaos at the meeting. When I countered that we have never been given any such latitude from the council, I was dismissed. I've been overruled many times at planning commission and have accepted it because I believed it was part of a planning commission process that had integrity. But my comments extend beyond this project. I am here tonight because I don't believe that integrity exists anymore. Since the unexpected departure of our former development director, I am seeing staff reports recommending approval for major projects that are devoid of analysis, or data, or studies, and commissioners who either don't understand how a staff report should read, or they don't care. Everyone bitterly complains about all the abuses that occurred the last time we had an interim community development director, but here we are again. If the goal is to shovel through as many projects as possible and then belatedly cry foul on the interim like last time, then do nothing. If Mr. McClary and city council care about this process and want it done right, then I suggest you intervene immediately and clarify with Mr. Winiger the need for objective reports supported by data and real analysis. I also ask you to come to planning commission and remind us of our mission, to look at the facts, follow the guidelines, and make reasoned decisions. Finally, I would also ask you to provide more education here at City Hall immediately for the newer commissioners so they understand their role. I believe this is one of those moments where you all are either part of the solution or part of the problem. I ask that my comments be placed in the record, and I invite my fellow Ohi citizens to keep a very sharp eye on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. I'm Scott Eicher with the Ohi Valley Chamber of Commerce. In general, I don't have a problem with this remodel. I've reminded many years ago when Eleo Zarmate, I don't know how many of you remember him, came into town, and he wanted to change the trim on his place of business, which is now the, it used to be Feast Bistro. And he wanted to change it to turquoise, and he got quite a lot of feedback from the planning commission. His comment was not to criminalize people who want to bring business to town by simply changing the color of the trim on their building. bring business to town by simply changing the color of the trim on their building. They were still within the arcade, and they were still within the arcade architectural guidelines. So in general, I don't have a problem with the color scheme that goes with this. However, it's, it's the process of whether or not the Arcade Design Guidelines apply here and whether or not they're to be followed. And I feel that if there's a process by which those guidelines need to be changed, then, then that process should be followed, as opposed to just making a change in a guideline by benign neglect. So I urge you to take a look at the guidelines and see if those really apply to this building or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Anything down there? Okay.
Liz wants to speak.
Do it. Do you have a card in, please?
No.
Okay, come on down, but I will repeat to the audience, and you might not have been here when I started the meeting, but we really ask you to fill out the cards if you want to speak.
Really?
Yeah, because this is, but fortunately, we don't have too many cards tonight, but we're trying not to be here all until midnight, okay?
I apologize. I wasn't here. I would like to point out that at the July 5th Planning Commission meeting, when they were discussing the different scenarios, that three out of the seven commissioners were in favor of the Option C. And that's, I think, significant because they did discuss, three of them thought that the scenario C fit in better with the guidelines for the Arcade area. So that's something to consider. And I think you also need to become clear on what the exact color schemes are, the three different options, because I don't know if anybody's totally 100% clear on the color. But I seen the one for C, I really think it fits in better with the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna close the hearing and?
Well, I was, was going to. I just want to double check since we allowed that. If there's anyone else here this evening, we'll call this the last call until next week. No, not you, Mr. Iker. Nice try. Okay. All right. Okay, we are now going to close the hearing and take this under advisement. Paul?
I just have one question for Mr. Winiger. He can come up. Out of all of these options, take Option 1, what does Option D in its design to violate the Arcade Guidelines?
Well, the challenge is, and I believe your staff report contains a checklist.
Two of eight.
Two of eight, yes. Thank you very much. It's actually page 8 of 10. It's 2-8 from the, from the Arcade Guidelines. It gives you a checklist of things that are encouraged. And I think that, that is, what is that issue here? Is there words like "should," "may," what have you? It's not prescriptive in terms of requiring things that are essential to Mission Revival architectural styles such as barrel tile roofs and what have you, but it does allow for interpretation and application of various elements and colors that are consistent with the Arcade Guidelines. So actually, each one of the schemes or options does have elements that would be considered consistent with the Arcade Guidelines in staff's opinion. I personally think that Option Number 2 does a good job of, or Option B does a very good job of adhering to that. I would actually argue that Option C, the colors are a little more bolder than, than the colors that you find in the Arcade and the Plaza Guidelines. But again, it's, I think there's a lot of subjectivity here.
Okay. Now, we have a photograph up here. It was a series of photos. Does that, does the exterior of that building meet the Arcade Guidelines?
I think you could find that it does. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the hub?
I would say the hub does not.
Okay. Of those photographs, were there any that, other than the one that was the hub, the photograph of the hub, were there any that didn't meet the guidelines?
I'd have to go through them again, but again, I think there are elements, a lot of it has to do with colors and, and features. I think all of them were consistent, other than the hub that strikes me as being quite contrary.
Would you consider the front of Bonnie Lou's to be Mission Revival?
No.
Great. Thank you. You rest. Thank you, Paul. Bill?
Mayor Johnston, please don't leave Mr. Winiger. I think the last exchange just illustrated for me part of the problem. Every example was in the arcade. There are separate guidelines for the arcade than there are for the Arcade Plaza. Correct?
That is correct.
Isn't it also correct that staff did not get the correct guidelines in front of the planning commission until the third meeting? I observed this. I watched every meeting.
I wasn't present for the first two meetings, so I'm afraid I can't answer that question.
Well, the problem is, is there's been, I think, a lot of confusion here. I also heard you say at the third meeting that you considered, when you talked to the planning commission, that the RK Plaza Guidelines adopted by the council in 201 were suggestions. Your exact word.
I don't recall. I don't, I would not characterize them as suggestions.
Well, that was your language. What I want to talk, what I want to talk about is the following. If you heard the applicant's thought process for the design and what I observed in terms of staff presentation, where the correct guidelines were not even presented to commission until the third meeting. And whereas, if you look at the guidelines, they're very clear that they're supposed to be part of the beginning process of thinking about design, not the end, and that they're supposed to, as adopted by council, they are supposed to be very specific in terms of why not to follow them. It's not a matter of whether they're liked or not. They're adopted by council. So the burden is on saying, why are we not following what's adopted by council? And if we don't like the guidelines, we change them. We don't ignore them. And so I have a problem with the entire process of bringing in historic issues for a building that's not designated as historic, to begin with, as a reason for ignoring the council-adopted Plaza Guidelines, which is everything other than the Landmark Arcade in the entire area bounded by Matilaha, Ojai Avenue, Montgomery, and Signal. And to talk about not even a citation of these adopted guidelines in the design development just really fundamentally bothers me, because it almost acts as if we're not looking at the environment as adopted by council as the fundamental part of the design development process. So it's not a matter of what I like or anybody likes. It's a matter of the sort of, the idea that this is, this is something adopted by council that's treated as an afterthought in the process. That's what I observed, on the terms of how staff behaved and not even getting the guidelines correctly presented to commission until way into the deliberative process. And then what I heard, the example of being, "Well, these are suggestions. You have wide discretion." I heard those exact words. And so I, what I'm concerned about is that if we're not going to be following guidelines as adopted by council, we have, we have very clear burden-proof findings as to why not. And especially after submitting, and this is a matter of fairness, other applicants over the years to fairly strict adherence to these guidelines, that we say, "Well, in this case, yeah, we put a big standard on them previously, but not so much now for various reasons." And we talk about, "Well, there's a story," and so forth. So I guess say that I'm having some problems with how this whole process occurred from what I personally observed.
And so it's true that the gas station?
Just one, pardon me, just one second. Matt, you said you were not at the first two meetings, so that was not you who didn't present them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And who, do you know who?
It was one of the contract planners that answers to Mr. Winiger.
Oh, okay, so someone else. Okay, Susan?
So the, the gas station on the right, adjacent to the building, followed the Arcade Guidelines, correct?
Correct. They were, they were, that was a big struggle, and they were basically told they needed to.
Matthew, my question is, and I understand Councilman Wierich's concerns, I'm thinking of the applicant, two and a half years in the process, and I would have thought on the front end, he would have received these guidelines so that they could be making the right choices, presenting the right project. And, I mean, two and a half years, if I was in business of developing, I'd be out of business, waiting that long to get some, some type of satisfaction. So that's my concern on the front end, is the fact that the applicant never received the proper information. And now we have on the back end the fact that the planning commission never received the proper information until, again, they were at a critical stage of having to make a decision. So I think what's before us tonight is we have to, we have to work our way through that process and come to what we consider what's in the best interest of our community.
Okay, let me pose a question. Is, is that correct, that the applicant never saw the guidelines? I don't know if Matt wasn't here, so I don't know if he can answer. Is that?
And I think this process was initiated before I or any of my staff were involved. I just want to make that clear.
And Ben, could you change that slide and put a slide of the building as it shows what the planning commission approved? Or, you know, show, show your building so we can see it. Okay.
So the scheme that was chosen is Scheme B. This is the front of the building, and the full renderings from each side are here. And there are, oh, it's on the floor, but that's also the front renderings. When this process started, it was with a different set of staff, and no, we were not given the Arcade Plaza Guidelines. I didn't personally know that there were two sets of, you know, there's actually three documents that cover, and we're right on the boundary between the Arcade, the Arcade Plaza, and the east end of Ojai Guidelines that are all separate.
But the former staff never provided you with any of that?
They did not. But I have to take some responsibility because it's also my job as a land planner to do that research, too. When I've read these documents since that point, I would find it very difficult to turn the front smaller building into anything that would resemble a mission building without major structural changes. Because of the scale and mass that it is, it has thin walls, it has a lot of glass. The style of mission is typified by heavy, thick walls that were built originally with low-skilled individuals that used adobe blocks. So you see very large, based, heavy, gravity columns and arches and thick walls, hand-formed plaster. You can't do that on a building like this. So, you know, I'm balancing here the fact that, yes, we didn't get all the information we could have. We didn't maybe get the initial concept direction that the project would have benefited from. But at the same point, we're working with a building that has very different bones, and we did not want to create, we didn't want to embark on that kind of effort, anyway. And to turn this building into something else would have, the scope of work would have advanced tremendously, but we wanted to keep this building as it was originally intended as well.
Was there any consideration given to try to make it blend more with the building right next to it? I mean, that almost looks like a portable building in the front, not after you've remodeled it, but just in its current state, it looks like almost a temporary structure. And so I'm wondering, was there any consideration given to the, I guess it's what, the Board of Realtors office next door to do something to, at least from the view, what do they call it, the view corridor or whatever coming down?
Yeah, there's a, there's a view corridor to the landmark of the arcade. Bear in mind that the original option was to literally remove the wood siding that's deteriorated and paint the trim.
Yeah.
I mean, that was the extent of work on the front of the building. The front of this building is 21 feet wide. That's it. That's all we got to work with. And we didn't want to tear off the only things that give that building any visual interest to make it not just a box, which are the cobbles and the, and the trim details that just, you know, give it some shadow lines. We didn't want to tear any of that off. What we wanted to do is peel off that old siding that someone had put on over the top of the original siding, expose that, paint the trim, and that was the extent of our scope. So there's not a lot of room to push for a significantly different style when the building shape doesn't suit it. And we didn't honestly think that this scheme of colors clashed or detracted from the nearby arcade. We felt like if we generated a faux mission style and added all these conjectural features, all we'd have done is allowed there to be a new guessing game of which is the original building, which is fake.
Well, much as I like you, Ben, I don't buy that argument, because that's also true of the gas station right now. You know, so it's not much of a guessing game. We know which is the faux stuff. But I'm just thinking, just from the standpoint of the neighborhood, when I first looked at that, I thought, well, maybe that could even get torn down. It doesn't look like a very particularly, you know, compared to the rest of the building.
Right, right.
Okay.
But Bonnie Lou's, again, look, Bonnie Lou's is next adjacent building in the arcade. You know, there's nothing that we're going to do that's going to blend in to that color scheme that you're going to approve and all the building next to that. And as I go down, and I went to the back of the plaza, too. That's where some of the photos were that I took of red plaster, black doors, black trim, metal siding. There's some CMU back there. I didn't take a photo of that because it wasn't particularly pretty. But, you know, there's a lot, if you're going to blend into something, you can only pick one thing. And I thought that this was a neutral-toned building, a neutral color.
When you started your presentation, you had a series of pictures of how it used to look down there. Did you, in your research, see what it looked like before Mr. Libby and Company decided to put the arcade up?
Yeah, it had a, it had some wire glass up above that I presume is gone now, that was, it actually matches some of the buildings that are in the arcade proper. When you look above, and you don't often, but when you look up above those front storefronts, you see that they have glass tiles.
What I'm getting at is that the arcade in itself was a false front and a faux construction at one point.
Yes, it was. Yeah, so that was more of a western.
And I was just wondering, yeah, right, it was an old western, false front place. I just, you know, wondered if, you know, if something along the avenue part there, adjacent to a building that does have, whether you call it faux or cheesy or whatever, not, not authentic, but at least it would be in harmony. I guess I have concerns, not so much, I'd like to see something done there with those buildings, but it's the actual land swap. When this all began, I thought there was going to be an exchange of land. I didn't realize we were going to take the trees down. And, I mean, there's a rationale for doing it, but when you couple it together with these other considerations, I can see why there's a lot of concern. I'm not sure exactly where this is going, but I will shut up for the moment.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm looking at it. I, I don't like to see everything looking like cookie cutter. And, you know, this building is there. So I guess the council has to make a decision. Are we going to allow a building to be renovated and not make it look like a movie set? Or are we not? We're going to demand it be torn down. I mean, I remember Firebird Plaza, we demanded that it was torn down, and we ended up with something that was horrendous in terms of Mission Revival. Nobody would suggest that that turned out the way it was at Firebird Plaza. Nobody would suggest that that, that redesign and tear-down and rebuild turned out the way that we had envisioned it on the, on the planning commission. This design is not objectionable to me, but I think we have to make a decision. Are we going to allow a building like this to be renovated in its present condition, or are we going to demand that if anybody wants to do anything, they have to tear it down? That's the way I see it.
Mayor Johnston, actually, I'm not sure I agree with, with that reasoning completely. Because if you read through the Plaza Guidelines, again, separate and distinct from the Landmark Arcade Guidelines, we keep referring back to the arcade examples, guideline, the Plaza Guidelines do not apply to the arcade. Let's, we keep that clear. There's page after page after page of design elements that are adopted by council to be included in the thought process of designing. It doesn't mean creating a Firebird Plaza. It means using the elements when they are reasonable and appropriate in the design-thinking process. It means using the elements when they are reasonable and appropriate in the design thinking process. And I don't think that happened because of the way that staff did not get the correct guidelines at the front end, the way that staff did not present the guidelines to the Planning Commission until they were two thirds through the process. And so I'm not sure I accept the idea that you can't include elements without tearing down the building. Scheme C doesn't do that. It includes mission revival elements that are consistent with the nature of the building. So I'm, I'm not sure I, I accept the, the either or, the way that you described it. Councilperson Blatz.
We're going to be commenting on this all night. That's why it was in planning forever. But, you know, when I look at the pictures, and this building has always been a standalone building. So the first thing that I looked at is how could we carry over the arches and the facade of the Arcade? And if we did that and continue it from that building to the next building so that as we're looking at this continual line of mission revival, I think that's, I, I think that's...
That's not what the Plaza guidelines say.
I know, but I'm just saying, I have a sense that that's what the community would like. Is some continuity in what that Arcade and how it fits that corridor and how it would tie in. So that's one thought that I've, that's, that I've ran by. And the, the interesting part about, about it again, is if you look at the old pictures of this, of this building, it's always been a standalone entity. It's never necessarily been a part of the Arcade. And I imagine if Mr. Libby had wanted it to be a part of the Arcade, he might have carried that facade all the way to the end. Us requiring the Chevron Station to meet certain guidelines and them agreeing to it, I look at that expenditure as deep pockets. They had a lot of money to spend and they wanted to fit into the community and they didn't, and they wanted to, you know, to be participants. I don't know if we have the right to burden an applicant to that extent. If that's what we're choosing to do, and that's what I believe Councilman Blatz is saying is, if we're not going to allow someone to renovate what is, then we need to tell that person, you can't, and therefore you shall tear it down. And then these are the guidelines or these are what we would like to see. And so I can see why this discussion is going back and forth and back and forth. I'm not as concerned about the removal of the podocarpus as maybe Susa is or maybe Johnny is. Because I don't see them as being some historically incredible tree that can't be removed and replaced and something equal to or better than planted. I actually remember early on in the discussion on this, the fact that at one point in the Planning Commission, they asked the applicant to actually do something to Bonnie Lou's wall, which is private property. I was flabbergasted with that. Again, as a condition for you to remodel your piece of property, you need to remodel theirs. I didn't understand that part of the conversation, yet it was a part. So...
I thought that was because of the removal of the trees.
No, no, it was actually because there are aspects of Bonnie Lou's that can be seen without those trees. So, again, I, you know, does this enhance the community? I believe it does. Does this meet the, the guidelines that have been presented to them through this entire discussion? I believe it does. So I don't know if we're going to choose A, B, or C. But personally, they all represent a nice remodel. And it's a standalone structure and any of the remodel that would, that they choose or we choose is going to benefit the community.
Oh, I'd like to see the building follow the, the Arcade guidelines.
Plaza guidelines.
Arcade Plaza guidelines.
And Scheme C does that more than the other two schemes. And it doesn't require tearing the building down.
Okay, Scheme C.
I'm just saying for the, for the record.
Yeah.
Are you saying that, that, that Scheme C, I don't know that I like that term scheme. Let's call it option.
We're put in an awkward position of having to, you know, there is some personal, I don't like black.
And again, my point is not personal aesthetics, but the fact we have adopted guidelines. And, and Scheme C includes elements of the Plaza guidelines in the way the others don't. And I'm not faulting the applicant, but I am faulting the process that was...
Are you satisfied with C?
I can live with it.
What, if I could ask the mayor pro temp, what elements in C are present that are not in B?
Well, for example, if you look at C...
Perhaps we could get, I have it here, but it's more, it's easier to look at up there.
You notice you've got some of the, the, the way that the, I hate to sound like a planning commission, I hate to do that. But if you, if you look at the way that the, the structure over the patio area is constructed, includes a heavier element in the, in the, that is part of Plaza guidelines rather than thin elements. It includes the colors that are more consistent, includes for both the, the covering and the, and the, and the different elements that are, that are included. All I'm saying is that you can see the difference without tearing down the building. And what I, in terms of A, B, and C, you can see, if you read through the, the Plaza design elements, it's, it's elements. It's not, it's got to look like the Arcade and you can see the difference.
How about the awnings?
Again, if we're choosing A, B, and C, all I'm saying is that C includes more elements of the Plaza guidelines than, than the other two.
Including the awnings?
Yes. In fact, if you look at the, at the Plaza guidelines, they talk about awnings in here.
Well, they're lighter. They're not going to create a heavy...
Awnings and umbrellas. Page 31. Awnings add color relief, forms relief and pedestrian protection from the element. They've also, so they, they go through a whole thing here about awnings.
Okay. I just don't see a heck of a lot of difference between B and C in the front of the building. Now, maybe the colors are different. The color appears to be different on the back of the building. It's not quite as white, I think, or...
Right.
It's more of a gray.
And I just, I just, my point is that...
You're both starting to sound like planning commission, but that's okay.
Yeah, is, is what, what we, I can live with that and what would we have seen if the guidelines had been front and center from the beginning?
Right. Well, one of the things, having been on the Planning Commission for 10 years, is you have to, you have to take yourself out of, of what you like. Because that doesn't come into it. You have to see what is, what is consistent with the zoning code.
And the adopted guidelines.
And the adopted guidelines.
Exactly.
And that's... And you have to take out what, you know, maybe I really like the awnings, but if they weren't consistent, then you don't, you don't say, well, I'd like to put awnings there. My only, and I, I just, I personally like the awnings, but that's not the point. The point is that, that it clearly from the front, I, I like what's done in the patio area. I think that has a little bit of a mission revival look, but the building doesn't. And to change it, the front of the building to look like the Alamo, you know, is not what we want. And the building is what the building is. And I don't think it's objectionable and it's getting a nice facelift. Even though from the front, it doesn't look like it belongs in, you know, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Okay, well...
May I make a suggestion that we briefly, it's maybe completely inappropriate, but can we reopen the public hearing? If there's anyone else that wants to speak that's been following this?
Not at this point unless we want to invite somebody up. And I haven't said too much so far, which I'm sure you're grateful for. But I guess, I hate to see the applicant delayed further. But on the other hand, I think just as far as perspective, we should understand, we are in a way, this is a very unique situation. We are partners in this deal. We benefit as does the property owner. And they benefit by the exchange of land or whatever we're calling this to make their property more productive, which in, which is good for the community. There's no problem with that. But when we get into things like how much we switch over or we cut the trees down or whether we just, I don't know whether we're just ignoring. I have, I can hardly read this. They did present the checklist, but it's, it's, my old eyes can't quite read it.
I like to disclaimer at the top of the checklist.
Right. That if we have rules, I guess my position is, is that we ought to, you know, sort of first things first, that if, if in fact these rules are not, are being violated, I think that's what Rosalie was suggesting. I'd like, maybe we should invite Rosalie back up to, to talk about that a little bit. But if in fact we're ignoring these rules, then maybe the, the first decision is, is whether or not, I don't know how much more is there left in that whole block ever to apply these rules to. So you have that. You have the question of where the little passeo is, how tight it's going to be. Obviously, you'd like more in the, in the patio area. But my understanding that, when I first heard of this, is that all we were doing was moving the walkway over, not to take the trees out, but just move it over as far so that the land would be contiguous and therefore be more usable for the private property owner, the commercial use, and we'd all be winners. And now this has been kind of mushed together where to decide on one thing is to decide on all of it. Is, is that accurate, Matt?
It is all in one proposal.
Yeah, so, well, Rosalie, would you want to come up and, I don't know if you had somebody else you wanted to hear from Susa, but I think, Rosalie, you seem, you know, and you're on the commission, so one is, is your view that these, forgetting about the, what the staff did, but just from the standpoint of what the commission did, is, is this a, in your view, a total violation or ignoring of these guidelines?
I don't have, I mean, I'm not really, I don't have the guy, I made, I made a number of, I pointed out a number of items in the guidelines that I felt, let me, let me back up a little bit. We were presented the color and the material of the approved version that night at Planning Commission on a materials board. Do you like this or that or this? So at the end of the day, I'm not even sure what we picked. There was, and I'm not sure anybody else knows, I think we said, oh, pick the middle one. I mean, that's what they said. Pick the middle piece of stucco. So does it violate? I don't know. What color is it? What's the name of the color? What's the name, you know, what is that trial? We're used to seeing things beforehand with the colors named so that we can review for a few days. So, yes, I mean, overall, to answer your question though, yes. The, the colors that are called out, as I recall in the Arcade Plaza guidelines, are more, they're not contrasting colors. They're meant to complement the rest of the Arcade, the softer hues. I can't remember all the language, but I felt personally that what was approved did violate the Plaza guidelines.
Were all seven members of the commission there? I mean, it sounds like if, from what I'm hearing, I'm interpreting that as that you felt the commission maybe was rushed a bit and maybe some of this could have been resolved at the commission level. Because I don't know, when looking at this, how it violates that. I got more, was more focused on the real estate transaction until I hear the testimony and it doesn't... So you, would you say, yeah, you did feel sort of rushed or did the commission feel rushed?
I mean, this is part of my problem is the commission doesn't seem to be setting any boundaries on how the information is presented. So, you know, it was a free for all. If you, if you watch the meetings, it was a free for all as to how things were presented and what it was and what we were looking at. And people were literally pointing, okay, how about that? I mean, it was ridiculous. That is not the way we're used to doing things. So...
And the vote, and the final vote was what, 6-1?
Yeah, for the, for the, for the, the middle version of, of one of the three grays that was on this materials board.
Can I just chime in as much? I highly respect Rosalie and, and what she does and the services she's provided. But she's one of seven and six other people actually did make a decision. And I don't think it's necessarily fair that we accept Rosalie's opinion and bias without having the other six commissioners here to respond to their thoughts and their reasoning behind it. That's why I'm not trying...
Okay, we're not putting the commission on trial. It's okay. We know that. It's one person's opinion, but a person who's experienced. I'm just trying to get the sense of what's, is there any other questions for Rosalie?
Is, is option C, in your opinion, closer to following the Arcade Plaza guidelines?
Yes. I don't think that that was probably Mr. Turner's best work. I think that if we had said, if we had actually had the opportunity to go, look, we're kind of straying outside the, the Plaza guidelines. Can you, you know, come back with something that's more interesting, but in the same color, the same scheme? We asked for it to, to look at simulations with the Board of Realtors, photo simulation so that we could see how it, it related to the building that it, it literally appears to be attached to. We didn't, we don't really even see that in any of these. So, but yes, I think that third option, to me, fits the guidelines better. And again, if we don't stick to the guidelines, then I don't, I don't know what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Ben, in your presentation to the commission, was, was it kind of like, here's three, pick the one you like best? Or did you have a preference?
Well, the, the hearing was continued and they asked us to provide additional samples and colors, which we did. I didn't feel that the other commissioners were confused or rushed. I, I don't have the ability...
Which of the three was your preference?
Mine was B. The applicant's was, the owners was B as well. There's a photo rendering that does include the Realtors' office next door. It's difficult to...
Yeah, okay. I didn't, I just, I'm just curious if you had the same sense.
This clearly shows the Realtors' office next door and I don't see anything remarkable about that building.
Yeah, we used to own it, didn't we?
City hall.
I mean, if you look at it, okay.
I, I don't want to preempt, but I'm ready to attempt a motion.
In, in your motion, can we separate?
Well, you can make it. I...
No, no, no. I'm not quite ready for that. Maybe I am, but not, I don't know. Can we separate the land swap and the design of the building?
I don't feel qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, but I'd like that idea though. Why is, why are they together?
You could separate them. It would be a matter of how you wish to separate them. But they're together because you can do the land exchange independent of the building. It would mean that we would have the passeo on the far left and then they'd have their two parcels put together, but they wouldn't have any design, I mean, they'd have to come back and get permits to do anything with it. We'd have to rework the agreements, of course, to adjust, to reflect that.
It's my understanding that design review is integral. The design review, the design is integral to this land swap.
I would, I would think that as well, Mr. Mayor.
And it's worth pointing out that you have greater control over the design. If we structure it as part of the land swap, you have the power to require any design that you find is consistent with the guidelines or to use a development agreement to adjust the guidelines. Once the land swap is completed, you lose that tool. And all you're left with is just the usual design review permit, which is fairly strong, to be clear, quite strong. But you retain greater power if they're tied together. But you could always, you, you could, of course, ask the applicant to redesign depending on whatever the council would like.
I want to ask Councilmember Haney a question. How long would it take to have trees that are that size and provide that level of shade?
Actually, the reality for that variety of species, they're underperforming. Podocarpus of that age should be about four or five times that height. So what it tells you is it's getting morning sunlight and it's getting afternoon shade. And so therefore, it's, it's not the particular tree that you would be planting in that environment.
But I mean, you plant a different tree and then how long before you have shade?
Well, depending on the, the size of the tree. So that's, you know, one aspect. But again, I think if you look at where the podocarpus are placed, because I've thought about this too, how can we create the swap, create a larger plant pocket for the trees to exist? And the reality is, this species of tree also has, you know, root problems. So if you move this sidewalk as far to the left as you can, but leave a green, a planter belt, that eventually down the road, someone's going to be repairing those, that sidewalk on an annual basis. So again, it's not, and I'm not a fan as a contractor ever of taking a tree down. But people put trees in wrong locations all the time. People put beautiful sycamores, oaks, all over, in their front yards, right over sewer lines. So you're making choices down the road. Do I, how many times am I going to replace my sewer line before I replace this tree? So again, this is, if, if this was some tree that I felt had just incredible, unique value... So again, this is, if this was some tree that I felt had just incredible, unique value, I'd be fighting tooth and nail for it. But this is one of those trees that is just common, and again, I think someone put that tree there thinking that it would grow fast and grow quickly and cover that wall, and the reality, it hasn't. It's not maturing at any rate, or at any acceptable rate for that, for that species.
They've been in there for decades, have they not?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Right, but they are now grown, and they do provide the shade, and there, I mean, there are some advantages to it.
They look healthy and good.
Yeah, well, I guess it's...
I'm going to attempt a motion, if that's in order.
Okay, it's in order, sure.
I'm going to attempt a motion to try to be fair, both to the integrity of the process, which could have been better, I think it's clear, and fair to the applicant. And we are not, it's not appropriate for us to sit here, and I'm going to preface my motion, and act as a planning commission, and talk about design details.
Yeah, right.
On the other hand, I think that it's appropriate to send this back to the people that are supposed to do planning development and design development, with some explicit direction from this council. And that is to, I would say, I'm going to make a motion to, A, refer this matter back to the Planning Commission with the explicit direction of applying in an inherent, in integrated fashion, the Plaza Design Guidelines, in particular, a further development of Option C. And B, that the applicant be subject to no more fees of any kind in that review, additional review process, coming back to council.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded, discussion.
And I think that's fair to the applicant and fair to the integrity of the process.
For, Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a clarifying question, thank you. Mayor Protam, I understand your motion to be to not impose any additional review fees, but not to waive, say, building permit fees in the future.
I misspoke. No more review fees of any kind. Design review fees.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry. That's my motion.
Okay, further discussion?
Well, you know, I'd be for it if we could set a timeline on this process.
Make a suggestion, and I'll amend my motion.
I'd like to have this back before council, before November, or the first, or the first...
Meeting in November? I'll agree to that amendment.
Okay.
And that's the soonest? September?
Not the soonest, the latest, isn't it?
October, November.
When, if, if we send this back to Planning Commission, when would it go back? What meeting?
You have to notice it. Mr. Winiger is checking, correct, we would need to notice it.
It would require noticing at the PC, which is doable, of course, it just, it may not be able to come to the next meeting.
It probably would be the first meeting in September would be the earliest I'd have to work with the applicants, but that's what we would shoot for, I believe that's the 13th.
Okay, so that could, it could go then, and then when would be the earliest it could come back to us under that schedule?
It would be...
October?
The first meeting in October, as the council presently has planned to cancel the second meeting in September, and there wouldn't be enough time to get the noticing done for that meeting anyway. So it'd be first meeting in October.
And then, I have a question of the applicant. After hearing our discussion tonight, and I think, just kind of talking out loud, there may be some issues with regard to the front of the building. How much time do you need to resubmit it to the Planning Commission, and they will then be looking at maybe some design revisions or something?
I think a couple of weeks, I'd need to go over that, because I need to redo those renderings. One point that came up in addition was that we would ask, whether it be you or the planning commissioners, for specific violations, let's see, since Scheme B was the one that was chosen, to point out to us exactly what elements of that violated the Arcade Plaza Guidelines. That would be useful for us.
That's not our job.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, it's a, it's a good, good request, you're right, it's not our job to do it, but the Planning Commission should be able to do that, they should be able to tell you if they're, you know, where, now, these guidelines, just from my information, are kept in place, what, for future remodels of that whole plaza area, just to keep it, okay, because I was going to say, there's not a whole lot left in the way to, this is, this is kind of it.
Well, you have this building and the building next to it, that's about it.
Yeah.
And again, I'll read it. "The purpose of the guidelines is to give clear and concise direction for the renovation of existing buildings and construction of new buildings." That's the purpose of the guideline, first sentence, in the Arcade Plaza Guideline.
Okay, but that's for renovation, because there aren't going to be any, yeah, but there aren't going to be any new construction, I don't think there are.
That includes renovation.
Yeah, okay.
And why I went to November was, I was listening to Rosalie, and I just wanted to make sure that planning didn't feel pressured again, to receive it, make a decision, and get it back to us, so it does come back to us, and we're here again debating it for another hour, two hours. So let's give the process the time it's due, let's set a date that it's going to come back, and let's be ready to make a decision that night.
Okay.
I accept amendment to your motion. It's not, my motion's not seconded yet, so...
Yes, it is.
Oh, yeah, seconded.
Seconded. I would request that when it goes back to the Planning Commission, that it goes back with some real definitive staff report on the design checklist, because I've read this, and it, for instance, it asks, does the design incorporate? Well, that doesn't say the design shall incorporate. Does the design incorporate it as part of the checklist, does that mean it has to, or does that mean it's just a guideline? I don't know, from reading the guideline. I don't know whether that's a mandatory provision, or whether it's a suggestion. If, for instance, it were to say that the design shall incorporate mission revival elements, well, then you know that this does not do that on the front. But I don't know if that's what the guidelines say. But the Planning Commission needs to know what it is they have to have in the design, and what is just suggested to be in the design.
Actually, that's what Rosalie stated, that the Planning Commission needs that information, and it needs those guidelines.
And the Plaza Guidelines have details on all of these different elements.
Right, so I think it needs to go back to the Planning Commission with a very detailed staff report, and do exactly what they need to be looking at in order to approve this design, because the Planning Commission operates within a box, and they have to fit all of their decision-making process within that box. When it comes to us, we have far more discretion, but they don't.
Agreed, we'll make sure that gets done.
There's a lot of discretion, though, in this case.
Beyond the box.
Yeah, right, okay, so, is the motion incorporated what you're suggesting, Paul? That's what I would like to have incorporated.
After we vote, I have another question.
But I, I'm fine with the amended...
Okay, well, maybe, can you repeat it, so that we know? I just said that I wanted it to go back with a very detailed staff report when it goes back to the Planning Commission, as to what provisions within these guidelines are mandatory, and which of the guidelines are only suggestions.
And I accept that amendment.
Okay. All right, if there's no further...
Well, I don't know if this is a condition, but I'd sure like to give it to the applicant sooner than later, as soon as it's developed. That's all.
After, after the vote, I have...
Oh, okay.
It has nothing to do with...
Okay, if there's no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Protam-Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, here's my, here's my question, as I, that part of, who's responsible right now for all that trash, that tacky bench? I mean, it, look, it's, it's the worst part of town, it's, it's bad, it's where people...
Where are you, what are you speaking of?
Right in front, see that bench there?
Oh, yeah, is it the bus stop?
There's no trash can, there's trash all around it, the bench is in disarray, and since this is going to be another two or three months before it gets cleaned up, and we're getting into the holidays, who's responsible for cleaning that area up? It wouldn't, you know, at least put a trash can there, clean up the bench.
May turn out to be us, but...
That is a city on bench.
Yeah.
Charlie Staub.
We'll make sure our part is clear.
Yeah, yeah, it should look nice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Concluded. Okay.
Can we take a two-minute break, please?
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break, those of you who are, who would like to escape May, and we'll be right back.
We're back in session, so of those who wish to remain and participate, please come in and sit down. Okay, our next topic is the composition of the city commissions and boards. And recommendation is to receive a report and provide direction to staff. And I guess I am one, if not the only one, who asked for this to be on the agenda, so maybe I will, I should kick it off, if no one else wishes to.
I have nothing to, staff has nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
I know that this is controversial and it is probably, I know from some of my friends who are on commissions don't like this idea. But I really am concerned for our city, not about commissioners, but about the streamlining of what we do because we are in the best of times. And we are not going to remain in the best of times. And it seems to me we should be preparing so that we are living within our means by streamlining those things which are reasonable to streamline. And it's not that more people can't participate, say at the commission level, but because there can be all kinds of subcommittees and other people brought into the process. But if the city council has five people, and most cities have five people running cities, and most communities have five people on commissions. We got into this seven people per commission, is if my memory serves me correctly. We used to have an architectural review board with five people, and we had a planning commission with five people. And they decided in their method of streamlining, they consolidated the two groups and ended up with seven people rather than, you know, dropping it to five on the theory they're now doing double work. And then it wasn't long before they started expanding the other commissions over time. But when I see the volume of paper that I'm toting around just on the council, and I start multiplying that by the number of people that are also getting the paper, and then think about the staff people who are serving all of this stuff. It may not be the biggest deal in the world, but it seems to me that there is no reason why we can't be just as effective with five-member commissions, possibly with the exception of the planning commission, only because of the dual role. And that certainly, I'm not suggesting we go to five and then remove people from commissions, but through an evolutionary process or attrition to get down to that would be a first step towards emphasizing that we need as a government, we're a small city, and when I see the way, you know, maybe it's just because of my background, no doubt, that I see the kind of money that we are spending on those things that might be spent on other things like automation and general plan updates and what have you. We are, we're in this habit of just sort of feeding the beast, as they call it, you know, serving one another and serving the bureaucracy as opposed to, you know, dealing with the policy issues. So anyway, that's why I put it on, and I would like the council to direct the city attorney to draw up a, an ordinance that would allow us to evolve as vacancies occur to five-member commissions and to also evolve the quorum requirements. I was told by one of my friends, well, we need to have seven people on the commissions because it's hard to get a quorum. And yet the other night when I was here for the Parks and Recreation Commission, they have seven and they couldn't get a quorum. Seems to me when you have seven, it's actually more difficult in some respects, even though I realize there's a workload to be provided. That that workload can be provided without everybody doing it, being a commissioner, and requiring Brown Act and all of the rest of the things that go with it, okay? So I'll move that and see if I get a second. If I don't, then I guess we...
Well, I, could I have, make a comment?
Certainly.
I'll second for purpose of discussion, okay, just to get it on the table, if that's okay.
Sure.
I, just one correction, I believe any direction we go in this fashion would involve multiple ordinances, not a single ordinance.
Right.
There's a different ordinance for each commission, I believe.
It could be one ordinance that would adjust a whole bunch of code sections.
The mechanism, yeah.
I'm just saying, the way it's written now, it's separate, it's separate ordinances. Second of all, I appreciate that you said that it would only be by attrition, that people serving now would not be affected. And I just, I think it's, it's a difficult, I want to hear from the public because my mind is not made up, but I think you raised some points that need to be considered, and that's why I seconded the motion. But I, I do, I know, I do know that there's people in the audience that want, before I comment further, want to hear from the public.
Okay, now...
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Sure, Paul.
As long as the motion's on the table, and again, I, I don't, until I hear what the public has to say, I haven't made up my mind. But I think if, if the motion is on the table as you suggest, I think it has to also address, and I'd like to have the, the people that are going to speak address, the issue of residents being on the, on the, on the commissions as opposed to non-residents. Because part of that, part of the reason why it went to seven at one point in time was because we wanted to have a mix of people outside the city limits as well as people inside the city limits. But I think that with seven, you can have two outside the city limits, perhaps three. But you can't have three when you, when you get it, I think you have to have a majority of people that live within the city if you even want to approve having people that don't live in the city on our commissions. And I think I'd like to have the public comment on that as well.
Okay, and I would incorporate that in the motion because I, I have no objection to people living outside the city serving on commissions, but I do believe that the citizens should have some priority, assuming they have the expertise to serve on commissions. So anyway, before we go further with the motion, I should probably, we'll have comments from Michael Addison's here, and I don't know if there's anybody else out there who didn't fill out a card that, if you do before Michael's done, we'll be happy to hear from you.
Well, I'm speaking as a representative of the entire Arts Commission, I should say that at the outset. When we heard some months ago that this idea was being bruited about, we discussed it at length in the Arts Commission meeting. And our conclusion is based upon the nature of our commission. I can't speak for the other commissions, I don't know how they function, I don't know to what degree they are active or reactive. But the one thing that I think is evidently the case, and I would argue necessarily the case about the Arts Commission, is it is active. We reach out to the community. In the four years that I've been on the commission, we have created the Artist-Student Mentor Program, for example, working with the Ojai Education Foundation and the schools to link artists and high school students in a specific artist mentor experience during the summer. We have more recently created a very important and long overdue liaison with the museum, establishing that we now have a decent place to store the city art collection, and we've developed a pattern now of reciprocal exhibitions, both here in the city hall and in a designated place within the museum, and that will continue to be providing display for the city art collection. That collection too does not happen by things coming to us. It comes because each year, an active subcommittee of our commission goes out into the community, canvases artists, gets suggestions, goes to gallery exhibitions, and then chooses a list of artists that the entire commission then examines and chooses the artist or artist of the year to add to the city collection. Another committee, for example, is the Education Committee, which has been actively involved over the past year, working with people in the museum, especially Craig Walker and Mark Lewis, developing a book on Ojai architecture, which is ready for the printer. Working with Carlos Grasso, a noted Ojai artist who's serving as the consultant on layout and design, the book is ready to go to the printer. Now, all of these things happen so that Ojai, which prides itself on being an arts community, is kept active in that regard and actively engaged with the city as we try and meet their needs and as we try and understand that there are new opportunities for citizens in Ojai to experience art. This is not a committee that just gets reports, reads them the day or so before the meeting, and then evaluates the material. This is a commission where every single member is actively engaged throughout the month before our meeting, working on specific projects. And I can only say that if the commission reduced to five members, it would cripple what we are able to do. And I would urge you not to take a one-size-fits-all approach, but to look at the nature of each commission and evaluate how many members that commission should have, depending on the nature of their work and the nature of their mission. Because that is what drives us on the Arts Commission. Thank you.
Just for the record, the question...
Just a second, do we get another card or something?
I had a question, Mr. ...
Okay, what, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Could you, I had a question for you, just to make the record clear. Your argument would be that the motivation for people to accomplish these tasks, or accomplish these, these missions, would be different as if they were a member of a subcommittee, not a member of the commission, as opposed to a member of a subcommittee as a member of the commission, there'd be a difference in motivation, is that your...
I think there'd be a difference not only in motivation, but I think in the perceived authority, if you will, of commission members. When the commission, a subcommittee composed of members of the commission now, goes out to visit studios and to visit galleries as they search for the artists that they feel it's time to represent in the city art collection, they're given access to studios, they're given private showings in galleries because they fully represent the commission.
Being commission members is a bit of a guerrilla pass, in other words.
Is, is a door pass, if you will.
I got you, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Questions for Michael, if not, okay, Brian?
Brian Akins, resident of Upview. Another city council meeting I've come to that I didn't plan to speak. That happens.
I always figured that you will speak, though, that's good.
I don't. Dawn keeps extra cards in her personnel for me. The numbers, so it was seven people sitting here, I, and hearing the discussion, I leaned over to Michael when the discussion was, well, with seven members, it, you know, things don't get done. My comment to Michael was, it makes it sound like we're the ones that are impeding people making progress. When we try to move things along just as quickly as we can, we're sometimes limited by the notice-type things and then continuations, and we can't get things done. But it's not the numbers, the numbers do, I see in the years that I've been involved in the HPC, I think only one time have we not met because we didn't, couldn't do a quorum. We haven't met the last two months, not because we didn't have a quorum, but because we didn't have any business. So we're there to, to adjust when we see things and to make them take place. We like having the diversity of people. We have two people on our thing that actually have historic homes or, and have applied for historic homes, so they bring that to us. We have Terry Hill on it, other people that are involved. Interesting, right now we have four Ojai citizens and two non-Ojai citizens. That would be Darwin McCready, the non-Ojai citizen who's the chair of our board, and Brian Akins, the non-Ojai citizen who is the vice-chair of our board. So if you eliminated those two, you might have a tough time finding chairs and, and vice-chairs since we seem to keep getting elected year after year. As I've pointed out before, without having a non-resident here, you would have lost David Mason when he was on the east end outside. You would have lost Pat Clark Dorner, you would have lost Craig Walker, all people who are non-residents that have contributed, so. It's the fourth time I've spoken and maybe the earliest, so.
Yeah, and quit.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Well, I don't think the motion is, includes excluding people outside the city, yeah. Yeah, because I...
It was rigged.
Yeah, right, and I, and I raise it by saying, I think where people have interest and skills or special talents or things that can help the commissions, I think that's great. But I think that the, if we as a city, well, people who live in the city, it's, you know, we, we should, you know, and maybe expand the boundaries if people want to expand that. I would rather just expand the membership and allow people like yourself who have a real passion for what you do and have demonstrated your willingness to work, that, that's great. But there are five positions, and I wouldn't think all five of them would be outside the city. I think that, you know, just, it, it doesn't, doesn't preclude people and the commissions for bringing other people in to help. It's just that that is more of an administrative kind of activity and, I, okay, I'll shut up, bye.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else out there?
Rosalie.
I think I've expressed myself on this point before. The reason that seven makes sense on a planning commission is just because of the, the distribution of talents that we need to really make good decisions, you know, landscape architects, architects, realtors, contractors. What we do is fairly technical, and that breadth of experience is important. That said, the lack of education of how to conduct that process, you know, if you have seven people and two or three don't understand the process at all, then it really is moot. So I think that it's really, seven's important, but what's really important is that you have enough commissioners who really understand what they're doing and how to do it, and we need to get education because sending people off to, you know, someplace out there isn't cutting it. People don't know what they're doing, they don't know how to make a finding, they don't, they don't know. So seven is good, but educated is better, thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. And also having a staff who understands that particular role to help the, the commissions is helpful also. Okay, other discussion, if not...
Mayor, can you just explain, one of the first things you said was the cost, and I'm not clearly sure what the, the cost of running the commissions are. Is it, other than, I guess the major cost would be the liaison from staff is the major cost. So in other words, the planning commission requires the attorney, and it requires the CDD director. The Recreation and Parks has, who's the liaison to that, Steve? Is it...
Recreation manager?
Recreation manager, but in the past it was the assistant city manager, along with the recreation director.
That's correct.
So that had changed.
Right, but the staffing remains generally speaking the same, and I'm not saying that this is a huge, you know, boon to the, to the city. We're going to balance the budget by doing this. But I've been a lot of places that have worked very well and have a lot of really talented people in communities much larger than we are, and they do it with five. And I know as, as a fact, and I think the city manager, although I won't, I won't put him in the corner for, or get into this discussion, but it is, it's not two more people when you're dealing with a five, or seven-member board or seven-member council. It is almost double the work and the coordination and the things that, the more people you have and the more packages that get put together and, and all of that kind of administrative stuff, to what end? We, we have done it, and we do it because it's nice, but it's not required. And if we're going to not do things like have our automated building permit thing worked out, and we're not going to get ourselves streamed as the newspaper asks, how come you don't at the city do what they do at the county, which is you go to the agenda on the internet and you push the, the agenda item on the agenda, and it takes you to the video and takes you to the discussion, and you don't have to go through honey. There's all sorts of technical things that we could be doing, and yet we get a report that say we're, our budget's balanced, we have extra money, when in fact we don't have extra money, we have a huge unfunded liability. We can manage it, it's legal, but this is during the best of times. And when the best of times are likely to disappear, at least within the next two years, in my guess, and that we're going to contract, and then we're going to still have to staff and furnish all this that's not required. It's a matter, it's kind of, it's a statement we're going to streamline. It is no disrespect to anybody, but it's to start focusing on how we do business. And that's, again, just one person's view, but I, I heard other people, you know, grumble or make comments about it, so I thought I'd be the, the lightning rod for bringing it up and, you know, right, if it crashes and burns, it does. But I would hope that it wouldn't, because I think we can work with this and we can still support the arts, support the museum and the historical preservation.
I have one last comment, I think what I've heard in the past too about the reduction of, of commissioners is the fact that the commission may be weighing in with five people and their quorum is three, and all three of those could be people that live outside of the city. Or the majority of that quorum are people that live outside of the city. And what they're doing is actually making law or governing people that are, you know, that they're not a part of. I, I know they're a part of the valley, so I don't want to make that clear, I don't want anyone out there throwing stones at me. We're all in this big picture. But the reality is these commissions actually have direct control and influence over our city. And so one of the comments that's always been made to me in the past is, if you reduce these, the size of these commissions, that's one of the things that could happen, is the fact that the majority of a quorum could be people that live outside of our community that are making, you know, passing laws, that does not affect them.
Well, that's true, and we as a council are appointing these people. I wouldn't think we would appoint a majority to commissions that don't live in the city. We wouldn't discriminate against them, but there would be no reason to go outside.
Currently, we have a limitation, you know, there can't be any more than three on a seven-man, seven-person commission.
And you have two on a five-person...
The only time that it potentially could happen is if we, if we move forward with the mayor's suggestion, is through attrition, potentially we could have all non-residents on a commission. Or while you wouldn't, you wouldn't ever have a quorum, I guess that the, as part of the motion, Matt, there'd have to be, what's the quorum when you get to six? And what's the quorum when you get to five?
The quorum when you get to five would be three.
Right.
What would the quorum...
What is it, six?
At six, it would still be, it's fifty percent plus one, it'd be four.
Right.
When you get down to three, if, for example, those who left were residents and the residency requirement was not changed, you could have at that point a quorum of non-residents. Even when you get down to two non-residents, you could still have a majority of a quorum.
That's true.
If there were only three present at any given meeting. The only way to guarantee inability, the only way to guarantee that there are no, that there would never be a majority of a quorum of non-residents is to limit non-residents to one. If you, if you drop the size to five.
Right. Because if you had two, you could always have a quorum of three, which is two non-residents and one resident.
Correct.
Or if you have a maximum of two non-residents and seven, then you don't ever have a vote.
That's right.
That's also correct.
And it's a majority of non-residents making a decision.
Because the quorum for seven is four, and two is only half that.
By the way, for the record, I will never vote for an even number of people, obviously, when making votes.
But, you know, that, okay, that last, you know, concept is, presumes that all non-residents would vote as a block and somehow to impose their will on the city. I think right now, we have non-residents that participate, and they're really, our boundaries are somewhat arbitrary. It's just been difficult to expand them because of the economics and, you know, tax laws, and nobody's had the, you know, the political will to do it. I'm, I'm less concerned personally that people that don't live in the city might happen to be a quorum on a particular night. I'm more concerned with, you know, the cumbersome nature of what we do for such a tiny town, and I wouldn't want to put a majority from outside the city, but, you know, you, you may, it is mathematically possible.
I, I would like to move on as soon as possible, so I'm going to say my piece, okay? I'm absolutely convinced that we need the diversity that we currently have on the Arts Commission and the Planning Commission. There's no question in my mind that we need seven. When I, you know, I've spoken individually with some of the commissioners. I'm not as familiar with the others, but when I start thinking of the vast range of recreation, everything that's involved with historic preservation, you know, there is so much involved with each of these commissions. And I am, as it's, I, I, I feel like we need the diverse, I feel like we're lucky, very lucky that seven people will volunteer for, for this job. And I, I don't understand how having more commissioners, it's, to me, it's an advantage. I don't see that it increases the workload of staff, because if something has to get done, it has to get done whether it's five people or seven people. So my feeling is to just let it be.
I have to admit that I'm a bit conflicted more than you... I have to admit that I'm a bit conflicted more than you are on this because, number one, I do appreciate the mayor's comments. I mean, it, you know, it is more work with more people. On the other hand, I listen to the commission members and understand and your point. The only other thing I'll add to the mix is that when I watch these commission meetings, it has to be said honestly, that everybody feels they have to say something. And seven people saying something is more time than five people saying things. So there is a matter of streamlining the decision-making. That's not a determinant factor for me. I just want to point it out for the record.
Okay, maybe there's a, maybe it's time to have a, some kind of orient, do we have any orientation for new commissioners?
Well, we do, but, you know.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one other thought. I was on the planning commission and I think we could have done our job with five people. It was nice to have seven, but I think we could have done our job with five. I don't, I'm not so adverse to seeing how it works with five. And it's only going to be less than seven if people through attrition leave. So I look at, for instance, the Arts Commission, and I would not in any way suggest that we go from seven to five overnight. But if we, if we said we're going to go through attrition from seven to five and we were to get to five and Chair Addison were to come back and say, I just can't operate this commission with five people, we can always change it back. But it's not going to go to five until two people leave. And that's the same thing with Park and Recreation, it's the same thing with the historic preservation. So I don't know, we're not asking for anything to change as it's present setup by going to five. I do know sometimes it's difficult and we've had some openings when there's been seven and we can't find someone, but that would be the same if it was five and somebody left. So I don't know. I suppose if, if we really wanted to see if it worked and if it did save time, we could, we could go to five through attrition. But then the council can always put it back up to seven if we need to. The chairs could come and say, we just can't operate with five people.
I predict that's what they'll do.
Well, I'm just throwing that out because we're not thinking about changing it. I can't think of one person on a seven, seven-person commission right now that I would want to see gone.
Yeah.
But if one went and we didn't replace that person, I'm not so sure that's all bad or if two went and we didn't replace it.
What if we had a great replacement?
Yeah, well, I know, it's, it's a tough decision and I'm not, I'm.
We're not making a decision tonight. The decision tonight is only whether or not the city attorney writes something for us to look at.
And I, you know, I kind of bow to the feelings of the boards too.
Yeah.
Or to the commission, particularly the chairs or the people on it.
Yeah, it, I mean, if I had my brothers, I would, if, if there was a commission that felt that they could run with five, let them come to us and say that, you know?
Well, they're never going to say that to us if there's seven on it. Yeah.
Okay, maybe I'm realistic.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a, it's an interesting, it's an interesting quandary. But I'm not hearing any of the, the chairs of the commission saying their meetings are lasting too long. I'm not hearing any of the chairs say, we don't rely on the expertise of all seven members.
You're debating with yourself, Paul.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's okay.
You know, it's one of those things.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not, the whole idea is obviously not, you know, life and death in the free world. And if, if the, I would rather, if the council doesn't agree, informally, I thought that there was more interest in this, but I don't want to put the city attorney to work that we also have to pay for if, if there's not a support for the idea. And I mean, I go along with what you said, Paul. You can always reverse it and it's never going to happen if we don't start. On the other hand, maybe you'd wait like other jurisdictions who had to eliminate things during the downturn. You just wait till bad times and then you tell everybody, sorry, we're cutting it and it won't be through attrition. It'll be lopped off, so.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor Johnson, and see if the city attorney cuts me down on this. Actually, an ordinance could be written that allowed it to be five or seven depending on council resolution rather than embedded in the ordinance itself. Is that not correct?
That could be done. It also could be accomplished, the trial period of five could be done without any change in the code by simply not filling, the next time there's a vacancy, not fill it.
I understand that, but.
The, the risk there is that the quorum would remain four.
I'm not, no.
Right, yeah.
But what I'm trying to say is that Paul's idea of flexibility could be incorporated in the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Do I have one comment?
Sure. We have a little time, Michael, come on.
It'll be brief, I assure you. I would just like to say that one of the things that impresses me most about Ojai is the attendance at these meetings and at commission meetings. The active engagement of the community in what's going on and what affects them as community members. I would argue too, that there is a real benefit to having the larger commissions because it means that more people in the community are engaged in the active life of the community. And I think that's an important part of what we call participatory democracy, of what we refer to as transparent democracy, because these are all open meetings and there are lots of diverse points of view expressed in these meetings. And I think having the larger commission enhances that important aspect of what we do.
And just one other comment. I did like the comment, I think it was, I'm not sure who said it, that we don't need one size fits all. Is there a reason why we would, you know, in case we need to compromise, I'd be open to that, but I.
If, if the council supports the idea of drawing up a piece of legislation, which I think Matt said he could do that would apply to each code, then you could pick and choose between how you would apply it. I just don't want to put the city attorney to a lot of trouble and the city to expense if there isn't a real sense that we're going to, going to do this. Sort of like, you know, totally banning leaf blowers and then, I should never let that pass my lips.
Really?
It's up again, yeah, I know. You didn't hear me say that, yeah.
You get asked it every week.
Yeah, right, okay.
Talkin' blowers.
It's already.
I actually like, frankly, I, I'm not arguing with myself, I'm arguing with myself again. I, I kind of, I would like to see what an ordinance looked like that looked at where the council by resolution could switch between seven and five. I kind of like to see what that looked like. Not that I'd necessarily vote for it right now, but I wouldn't mind seeing how that, how that read.
Okay, should we have a vote on, on that and get, get on to the next item?
We have a, we have a motion on the table now.
Right, does that incorporate what Bill's, it's okay with me, I don't, with the idea of a resolution. Whatever makes it.
My, my comment is.
Most streamlined and gives us the most flexibility to reverse any mistakes we might be making at this moment.
I, I agree with that concept, but I don't think we want to spend money on the city attorney drafting ordinances for us just to look at because we're curious about it. I mean, I think we have to have a burning desire that we're going to approve it.
Well, in defense of my amendment suggestion, let's say we had trouble finding people to staff a commission. It's an easy fix then, to keep a quorum, if the council had the flexibility by resolution to, to change. So I, like I said, I'm, I.
That's creative, I like that.
I, I don't know what the future's going to bring and I, and I'm not, I'm still arguing with myself like you did, Paul, but I, I'm ready to vote to see what it, what it looked like reading-wise.
So, so just for clarification, if a no vote means keep everything the same? Okay.
A no vote means do nothing. A yes vote means.
Do nothing.
Write something in the chat.
Well, you still have an opportunity to do nothing.
I'll draft something for you.
Except for the city attorney. Okay, yeah. I may have to write a check for this particular draft, you know, okay? Go ahead.
Well, I just, are we going to take a vote? I just wanted to just to throw one last comment in there. I just, I completely agree with, with the commissioners that have spoke tonight. I remember we kicked this around two years ago and there was no will then. And I don't have a sense that in 2008, when we were at the bottom of the recession, that we had any idea that we were going to cut back commissions in 2008, nine, 10, or 11. So I don't, I, again, that's why when you brought up the, the money side of it, I just, that's just kind of stuck with me. I don't have a sense that, that what we do with these commissions is costing the city money or harming us in a negative way when I think of all the benefits that the city receives from the input and the, the ability for these commissions to be the conduit for our public to actually come and speak. It's easier to go to a commission and whether it's five or seven, but it's an easier venue to, to speak to than it is to come here to City Hall. So having said that, I don't, I would not be support reducing them at this point in time. So, just you know where I stand on that.
So, we can take a vote?
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Protem Wirik?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Well, I don't want to leave Bill by himself since he's a good supporter. I'm, I'm going to say yes, but, but it seems pretty clear that that's, well, I, you know, you did make a, a good point that maybe we could have it more flexible, but it's not necessary now. See you in the recession. Okay.
All right, here we are.
You don't have any more work to do, Matthew.
That's all right.
Yeah, okay, well, we saved some money there, guys.
That's right.
Good work, council.
Mr. Mayor? Just wanted to point out that we do have one, hopefully very quick item that is timely that we do in action on tonight. That's the designation of the League of California Cities delegate. I know we have folks here in the audience waiting to hear the cultural resources item, but being mindful of the 10:30 time, and I think that we could knock this item out very quickly. Council could certainly have the option of opening it and tabling it and then moving right on to the cultural resources item if they chose.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, let's go to, is what is that, item number?
Seven.
Seven. We've got the League of California Cities in Sacramento in September. I offered to go if nobody else has a burning desire to go to the big.
One voyage.
Yeah, so if, so.
Well, you know, it's interesting. I remember I was the voting member last year. I wouldn't have a problem with doing that again if you had conflict.
Well, if you'd like to go, I.
Actually, it's, it's exposure. I, I enjoy it, so I have no problem being the rep on that.
Okay. We have a, is anybody else interested?
You can also appoint up to two alternates.
Okay, why don't you appoint Randy and I'll be his alternative.
If something comes up, great. Some moved. Appreciate it.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, it's moved in second, there's no discussion and there's no objection, done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Fine in Sacramento, Randy.
Taking one for the team.
Yeah. Okay, we are now cultural resource policy update. Mr. City Manager?
I'll give a very brief staff report. Just recall, we had, staff had been directed to prepare a request for proposals and we did circulate that and brought those to the council and the council ultimately determined to reject those. At the time, direction was also given to staff to check back with the county of Ventura to see where they are in terms of their process and policy development on terms of cultural resources protections. We did check with the county and in short, they don't appear to be moving anywhere too quickly. They are working on the matter, but we did not find anything in particular there that we felt that we could immediately dovetail onto. So we are bringing this report back to the council and hopefully with, asking for some direction in terms of where the council would like to go with this issue.
Okay. Discussion.
I have some comments, but do we have any speaker cards?
Do we?
Oh, look, a stack.
The late mail again, okay. So much for my effort. I'm batting a thousand though, right? The wrong way. Okay, Dawn? You want to? Okay, Julie? Dawn, you want me to keep the card in here though? Okay.
Good evening, council, staff, community. So here we are, back at the beginning. We've been at this a very, very long time and, you know, at the moment, as we speak and since this time has gone on, we have consulted, we have been notified. We do very few AB 52 projects, Sequa projects, and so where we're left at is how we're going to implement what has been our issue all along is distinguishing discretionary projects and ministerial. So when we look at what our purpose in protection of cultural resources and looking both at state law, I have talked to the commission and so hopefully there is going to be a letter drafted. But in the meantime, we have, there are information that the Heritage Commission, Native American Heritage Commission out of Sacramento does have that is available. It is N A H C dot C A dot gov slash resources, discovery. So I'm going to give you these sheets. One is very good information on what people should do in the discovery of Native American human remains and the other one is understanding cultural resources and just what on that state level is to be done. Section 106 is another consultation, but that is more federal law and we're not doing anything, we have no federal land here, other than Lake Casitas, and that's a whole different issue. So coming back to what we're trying to do here and, you know, protect what is going on in our community as far as development and what we as a ad hoc committee would like to revisit and with our public community, trying to revisit what we've put down and what have been put together in these reports. And just really just kind of streamline it and just get right back to it perhaps and, and look at what we can do immediately to bring all that work together in something that can satisfy, you know, we've, we consulted with county, then city, county Ventura and maybe mirror some of what they're doing right now. So I want to go ahead and let Dawn continue with that and I'm going to give these to Gail here and she can make copies for you.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. And Dawn, you want?
Good evening, Dawn Teeding. I heard your previous conversation on streamlining, so I am going to keep this brief, hopefully, and just hit on a few points. I'd like to reserve any remaining time at the end to comment. Firstly, regarding the administrative report, I wanted to make a note that the fee schedule that's attached is not the fee schedule for the quick check. The fee schedule is for an archaeologist to go in and do a, a record search, what we've been discussing and what's in place. There's a quick check agreement that the city has with the CRIS system, California Historical Resources Information System. And we, Ventura County is out of Fullerton, which is called the South Central Coast Information Center. So I'm going to pass these out. So you have a copy. The cost for a quick check, check on a property is $75. I can confirm as, as you saw in your staff report, we did meet on June 29th with the county. One thing that I'd like to point out is there is a difference between the Ventura general plan and the Ojai Valley area plan. Each area plan and general plan are specific to the environment, so the conditions are different between the Ojai Valley area plan and Ventura. So if we are waiting until they do something with the Ojai Valley area plan, it's going to be quite a ways down the road since the Ventura general plan is not scheduled to be completed until summer 2020. As Julie alluded to, there are a number of resources that are currently available on the Heritage Commission website. So where are we now and where do we go from here? We'd like to offer a few, three, three steps for your consideration. One, I think important thing right now is everyone needs clarity. Staff needs clarity, tribe needs clarity, archaeologists need, need clarity, applicants and developers need some clarity. And so we would recommend that we establish kind of a common ground or floor to, to cultural resources right now by. resources right now by adopting the county's Ojai Valley Area Plan position that all discretionary projects are subject to archaeological review and include accidental language for discovery and the conditions of approval. That would be the first step. The second step would be to continue the preliminary archaeological assessment and tribal notification that was previously adopted by the council, so that we know if there's a swimming pool going in the middle of a recorded site. And the third part would be, as Julie mentioned, to continue our discussions on what can we come up with that considers ministerial activities in the permit process, and how do we come together to develop a common sense approach for cultural resource management in Ojai, to give cultural resources the same consideration that we do give to our heritage trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Could I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Dawn and Julie, just to drill down to a real basic question. So in the county, if you're building a swimming pool, you don't even do a records check?
I do not know if in the county there is a... If a swimming pool is a discretionary or ministerial activity.
They're usually ministerial, I believe.
Correct.
So you don't know that particular classification in the county?
I do not know, but the Ojai Valley Area Plan does state that all discretionary development permits.
No, that's the point, though.
Okay.
In other words, if a swimming pool's... That's a big hole in the ground with no review if they're ministerial.
We did have that discussion with the county, and it is something they are now alerted to, and...
So that's an issue in progress. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alan? Then Connell or Cannell?
Cannell.
Cannell.
I want to thank you for your service, first of all, and I really mean that. I just showed up to...
Patience.
...update the council that Dawn had contacted Andrew Stasi, who contacted me, and we had our own meeting. And we met at the museum on July 19th, and we had six people, five and two from the public. And I thought it was a very productive meeting because it was informal and we were able to discuss things, but the couple of main things that came out of it for me that I think are important for the city council is that, on the overall picture, how we start a process of this policy and ordinance, what pathway we take may be very different depending on how much money you want to put towards this. And is this a pathway that the burden is going to fall completely on the property owner, the applicant, or is the city willing to put some money on this? And if so, how much? And then we can look on the overall picture, what direction we're going. Are we going to write our own policy? Or are we going to look at other municipalities that have spent a lot of time and money on that and look at what we can glean from that? So I think the city council has some real hard questions about what is this worth to you? You have a general plan that says you have to protect, but I also think it's a pretty big leap from a general plan to every disturbance of dirt. That's a big leap. And so we need to take a... The city council, I think, needs to kind of take a hard look at yourself individually and say, what are we going to spend on this, and how are we going to do it? And when we have an idea of how that might come about, then we might have a better path of how this is going to unfold, because it may be two different or numerous different paths. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Andrew?
Andrew Stasi, a non-resident of Ojai, which, interestingly enough, in our meeting, we realized that we're all non-residents of Ojai, and none of us vote here. So that being said, we're all residents of the valley, which is... Has and does have an overlay of the area plan. And I would just encourage you... First of all, I want to second what Alan is saying. It's difficult... I'm going to assume that you don't want to put any money towards this or any money that you don't have to spend. If that's the case, the burden is going to be on the city attorney and the city manager to ultimately take this information, digest it, and put it in the form of an ordinance. My recommendation is that you still look at ordinances that people have spent probably hundreds of thousands of dollars in creating, and consider piggybacking on the elements that are acceptable. Beyond that, I want to pick up on what Randy had mentioned earlier regarding water. This is not our slice of the pie. This is a bigger issue that does involve the entire valley, and I do recommend that in the spirit of the guidelines of orderly development, that regardless of where the county is going, that you reach out to the county and, in a symbiotic way, work with them, because it does affect the valley as a whole, and it ultimately should be brought up. Beyond that, I have nothing else to say. It's late. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that's...
I have some comments, Mayor.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Just before we get into that, Mr. City Manager, are the... Do we want to open up... We got the Water Wise thing on here, and I think we have somebody still in the audience. How many people are here for the Water Wise? If they're not, well, then we won't worry about. We'll just continue that if we go beyond 10:30. Okay, I don't see any hands, so... Okay, go ahead, Randy.
So a couple of things. My first suggestion, and we could just... We can either make a motion or we can just discuss it in general. I prefer to discuss it in general, but one of the things that I'd like to see regarding this Valley Wide Area Plan and the county's...
General plan update?
The county's general plan update, but more importantly, the county's general plan and regarding cultural resources. I think it would behoove us to have Matt, the city manager, and Matt Winiger... Winiger, thank you, get together, review the county's ordinance, and then actually come back to us and say, these are the things that we could completely agree with, and these are the things that would be a benefit to all of us in Ojai as well as in the surrounding area, and bring that back to us. And I think assigning those three people to do that would be beneficial to us. I do agree with Dawn and with Andrew and with Alan and obviously with Julie, is the fact that all of this is bigger than us, and yet we've been focusing for the last two years on just us. And I'm not saying broaden the scope so that it takes longer, but I'm just saying, if there's already something that's in existence regarding discretionary plans, let's just take a look at it, and if it's worthwhile, let's adopt it or enhance our own discretionary process. When it comes to the ministerial side of it or the ad hoc committee side of it, I would like to take one more stab at this. I'd like to reduce the size of the committee. I'd like to encourage Councilman Protem Wyrick to be a part of it, Julie and Dawn a part of it, Andrew Stasi a part of it, and have Matt and, again, Matthew Winiger be a part of it, and give ourselves a time period to come back with something regarding this cultural resource and how it affects our community. And I think we're that close. I don't think there's that much separation between what all of us want and what all of us feel we need to do, and I'd be willing to give it another two months, if not three months. Try.
Mr. Mayor?
That would be my motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, a second.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we had already given direction to staff to investigate other jurisdictions and what they were doing, and to come back to us with the idea of what they felt was good and what wasn't good, and kind of tailor an ordinance for us already. I thought that direction was already given to staff.
I'm not sure. We did talk about it. I think I did raise that as a question, and I thought the outcome of that was that the staff was going to check with the county, because we had heard rumors or somebody thought on the... Somebody on the council said they thought that they were engaged and had a consultant, and we said, well, then let's don't reinvent the wheel. Now, I don't know if that was interpreted as...
No, I remember that as separate and apart.
Oh, okay, so it may have...
I might be mistaken. I just...
You may have given that...
It just... I can remember Mr. Stasi saying exactly the same thing, and us agreeing that that's something that we should do.
Dawn thinks she can add something here?
Yeah.
I think if I recall, on February 7th, when the council gave direction on where to go, it was part of what went forward in a proposal to... In the RFP, that was part of what the applicant for the RFP was going to do, but I'm not sure that council or, excuse me, staff ever received that direction. It was what the consultant was going to do.
I believe that's correct.
Did the RFP ever come back before us?
Yes.
It did.
And we didn't act on it, as I recall.
Correct.
Everybody agreed that that was, you know...
Too much.
Yeah, a hundred grand or something. Julie?
I would like to add, too, that with this group, we actually needed the archaeologist as well, as one of the experts. So, you know, there are certain things that I'm certainly not qualified in to answer archaeologically in techniques and costs and procedures. So I think it's important to have John, if he wishes. I'm not going to... He's probably listening right now, so don't say my name. No, but anyway, he's been very important to be part of this process, so I just wanted to add that.
Julie, what, if I might... Julie, what kind of contact or communications do you have with other tribes and other jurisdictions and what they're doing?
I've put that out. I've put that out, and they're hard to get back in touch with. Everyone is so busy. Some of the tribes I reached out to were other commissioners, and in some cases, you know, when you're a federally recognized tribe, it's completely different. So I'm trying to reach out to some of the ones that aren't federally recognized, and again, you know, they... I haven't been able to make contact. It's been real difficult, but that's been... I've been trying to reach out, just the return calls and... But yeah, and, you know, you have to look at their counties, too, and where they are. And I know, as a commissioner, they run into, because we were there trying to mediate a lot of the problems, and they're really very much the same all around, where larger projects, where they are state and where SEQA comes into play, and that's why AB-52 was formed, because as native peoples, we were the last to be consulted. So a lot of the issues that we work in on the commission is the lack of communication with tribes through counties and agencies and Army Corps of Engineers, which are a very powerful entity, and so we've had a lot of cases like that where counties aren't talking to tribes, they're having people sign agreements, and they've dismissed the tribe completely. And so, again, there's this lack of communication. I didn't know who to speak to. Well, here they are. So, you know, that's been probably the biggest issue, is having that communication and the lack of knowledge on the side of the non... And each tribe is... I can't base our needs on another tribe's culture. That there's... And even the commission coming up with our guidelines, putting them into policy, we can't boilerplate and tell every tribe that you're going to do this. That's not how it works. Everybody's unique. Their spirituality is different, the way they handle their culture and their remains and their artifacts. We're all very unique and different, so it's very difficult to really get down and use something that somebody else is using.
Yeah.
There are some similarities as you stay within your... Because I've been talking to other people within my own tribal peoples, and they're having the same difficulties, but...
Well, my only thought was that if there was a jurisdiction out there that had developed an ordinance already, that an individual tribe or group of tribes or whatever had said, yes, this is... They're doing a good job there, then we should go do it.
There is a one group. There is a group in San Diego, CRC. It's a coalition of tribes, of tribal chairs, with about, I think, three or four different tribal bands that have... And they go out and they consult. AB-52 has been very helpful for even the non-federally recognized tribes because of the consultation. But even though that they're not just... They're finally coming to a place now that AB-52 has gotten the agencies more aware of our concerns because of that, and it is filtering down into the general plan implementations and the updates on them and the restructuring of how the process has just stayed the same way for so long because there hasn't been that communication. So now they're hearing the concerns of the native peoples a lot more than most times before, so there's a lot of things that AB-52 is bringing out and going, you know, this isn't going to work this way. The burden that it's put on my tribal group, for instance, I'm the tribal group, you know, so I'm as a tribal chair. I'm consulting with many counties and agencies because we are the only state tribe on the southern end, so Port Wining, everywhere. So, and it's not a paid position either. We don't have the infrastructure to... We don't have an office. Everything's been put on me to do this, so... But it's okay. You know, it is a huge responsibility, but it's something that is... We're bound to it. And so, again, looking at the different things that people are doing, it's helping us in what we're doing here today. So I just want to, you know, make sure that all that work that we've been doing in the consultations and the ad hoc committee meeting doesn't get dismissed.
Julie, I'm going to interrupt you for just one second, and then you can continue. We have about three or four minutes. I want to make the call again. Is there anything left on the agenda that we're going to try to get to tonight?
I'm going to move that we continue item six. No, not six.
Well, we don't need a motion, as long as everybody's clear.
I'm fine. Let's not...
I made a call. Does anybody...
I won't say much more. You know, I just wanted to say...
I don't want to say.
Okay, that was the last call. Go.
Well, I just wanted to say, too, that, you know, we... The laws, you know, we have your distinctions of state, federal, ministerial discretionary when it comes down to it, like an endangered species. It reminds me of Craig, that, you know, if you have an endangered species on your property, can you kill it? No. Do you have archaeological resources that are protected by state law on your private property? Does that give you the right to destroy it and dig it up? Not really. You know, so as we keep reminding this community, and what we've been doing for the last three years is how sensitive this valley is, and where I'm being taken outside my valley and reminding how precious and how abundant our cultural resources are in Malibu, for instance, where I'm at, at Paradise Cove, you know, where we're doing... That's on private property. So, I mean, it's... We're everywhere, and the thousands of years... I killed a little birdie today, and it drove itself right into my car. And I thought, why can't this bird see us? You know, why can't it see the car? No, because it always goes this way. Always... You've got to change. So it's up to us to change that direction and to be watchful for those things that are constant. And the constant development, the constant use of water, the constant use of our traffic and our air, if we're not watching around us, we're going to lose it all. So, you know, what we're doing here and what has been said tonight about writing policies and being able to pay attention to what we've been doing and come up with something written, and sometimes even then it doesn't get followed, as we just heard earlier tonight. So getting something written is really very important. So, again, we're here to help, and we're here to be part of this, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my line of questioning there was just that I was hoping that we weren't going to have to reinvent the wheel if something was already out there, but from what Julie's saying, it looks like we have to invent the wheel, because there may not be anything out there. And how are we going to do that in this little enclave of four and a half square miles is rather difficult when we're surrounded by county. So I, for lack of anything better that I can think of, Councilman Haney's suggestion of re-resurrecting the ad hoc committee sounds like a good...
Well, like you said, I don't want to resurrect that committee. What I want to do is, I want to put together a small group of people and actually that have been a part of it and finish it. And as much as I respect and value John, I don't personally have a need for John. John has provided us all the resources that he... John has provided us all the resources that he's capable of giving up to date. What we need to do is start figuring out the how, how we're going to mitigate certain resources in, in the ministerial permit application. We already have it in the discretionary. We already have the ability to condition any, anything, any, anything that comes before us. So, now it's a matter of just taking that ministerial part of this and figuring out how we can either move it to something that can be conditioned, or recognize that there's just something there that doesn't need to be and leave it alone, but that's where we are, and I think we're that close. So, that's why I'm willing to take another stab at it.
Okay, so we're ready for the question?
Yeah.
Okay, if the clerk will call the roll.
What are we voting on?
On Randy's motion to, to, I guess they had some discussion here as to who's gonna go. We used a small group of people, and you named the certain individuals, I think, the clerk get that down. I don't know that it's particularly relevant to the rest of us, as far as, as long as they know who they are. Okay.
More time.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Council, or Mayor Protem Wirek?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Sure.
Councilmember Franzena?
There was a pause there. All right, okay.
Mr. Mayor, one small point of clarification. I heard in the motion, and maybe my notes were a little sloppy, but I heard to give the committee two to three months, was there a hard deadline on that or soft deadline?
I'd like us to come back, a second meeting in November before, do we have one before Thanksgiving?
Yes, we do, or right after. Look at the calendar.
That would be my preference.
It's the 26th of, yeah, okay, second meeting in November, got it.
Okay, we are past the 10:30, so let me know with the other items, I guess we're just down to, what, council reports, if there are any?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Johnston, I, I'm not sure where this fits in, but I will, I do wanna report that I paid a lot of close attention to a lot of postings in the social media relative to the issue that Lily Vasquez brought in. And I wanna report that I find myself a little uncomfortable with some of the postings that law enforcement made in response, and I'll explain why very quickly. And what I wanna point out is that I, I'm struggling with whether or not we may have an issue here, this is what I'm reporting to my colleagues, that transcends and goes beyond something that is handled just on a complaint basis. In other words, a complaint basis handles things according to an adopted policy, but it doesn't really get to the underlying policy question. And so, let me be very precise about what I'm not comfortable with. Our police chief, Mr. Fryoff, indicated that, in fact, we are doing observations of pedestrians and doing field tests of pedestrians based on just observed behavior rather than any other overt action in terms of, you know, things like vandalism or, et cetera, just people walking. Second of all, a statement was made that, quote unquote, "we," being law enforcement, "are doing our best," as you know, Ohio is battling a drug program like many other cities across the country, "we're doing our best with our limited tools to address those issues and hopefully force those in need of treatment in that direction." I have some issue with the idea of law enforcement pursuing a public health goal with policing action along these lines, where it gets very close, if not very, handled in a very great sensitive fashion, that we're engaging in, our law enforcement may engage in something that at least takes on the appearance of profiling. We're talking about pedestrians here, and subjecting people to having to prove innocence. In other words, detained if they don't, if there's outside of any, of certain field test guidelines after being stopped when they're walking, in some cases because of the deed for urine tests being transported to the city of Ventura, transported to Ventura hours later, getting back home. And the whole idea of, of law enforcement taking on the responsibility of trying to, quote unquote, "force those in need of treatment."
May I make a suggestion?
Is, is a problem, and I think that we need to think about whether we should explore this in a broader fashion.
If the council, with the council's concurrence, how about the mayor, Protem, the mayor, city manager, and the chief of police?
Okay, thank you.
That we all, we get together and we'll go over these, you know, specifically, and Jim can, you know, give us their insights, and we, 'cause I have some similar concerns that, I was particularly disturbed by a report that I received from a mother who said her 20-year-old son who has Asperger's, which is a high-functioning, you know, autism, was stopped and on his way home from work or something, and, you know, it's difficult sometimes to know what's causing the behavior of pedestrian, but I think it's sensitive enough, we should at least have that conversation and find out what's going on, because I really try to stay off social media, but this thing was bombarded. And I know Jim tried to go on and kinda calm it down a little, but then everybody's got a story, and then some of the stories become magnified. Yeah, you know, okay, we all know, we know how that works, so, okay, so.
One simple comment to that, though, you know, and I agree with, and I, I think what you're, what you're asking to do is perfect. I'd still think that someone needs to come back and just explain our public policy regarding.
Yeah, we should report it back.
Methodology. And, you know, it's interesting, my son's in law enforcement, and we started having this discussion last night, and one of the things that he brought up, and I just, you know, I wanna clearly state it, is I'm glad that she came and spoke to us, but we're only hearing one side of the conversation.
Of course.
It behooves us, before we pass judgment on anyone or any officer or any entity, that we gather all the facts, that's why what you're doing is pertinent to this conversation, and that we present it to the community and let them weigh in at that point in time. The other thing is, what's interesting, is I make a point of waving to every one of my neighbors in the morning as I head to work, and most of my neighbors walking are women. And I do that out of the, out of the, out of my internal belief that they know that I know that they're there. And when they're not there, it, you know, it dawns on me, why, why, you know, why isn't this couple walking, or why isn't that? So, just a red light goes on, and it's like, you know, and I'm hoping obviously for the best, but I think in law enforcement, I think that's something that we'd want, too, that our citizens to feel comfortable and, and, comfortable is probably the best word, that if a patrolman pulls up next to him, and it, no matter what time of day it is, that there's always gonna be this interaction of, hi, how are you, and is there anything that I can do of you, because you're in the service industry, just like we are. And I think that that's what the community expects, and, and again, I appreciate the fact that you guys wanna go forward on this and really do a good investigate, or not investigation, but have a positive discussion around this matter.
And I worked with Sheriff Dean for 25 years, and I know that he, the kind of person he is, and he would want that kind of a meeting to be held, because he doesn't want his, you know. There have been times in the history of the county, not just sheriff's office, but in policing, where certain kinds of problems start to evolve, and either it's just, it's not true, or it's true and it's, and very bad publicity, but have ended up with some very bad outcomes down in Port Waning, and so then training programs were provided and some orientation. And I think that, I'm sure that everybody wants the same thing, despite some of the hyperbole on the, on the social. But I think what the people are saying, at least the people I'm hearing from, is they wanna be sure we're not just blowing it off, saying, oh, it never happened.
No.
Things happen, and I'm sure there's two sides of every story, but the responsibility is ours, and, you know, and the sheriff, we're under color of authority, that we're extra sensitive to that, particularly under just normal circumstances. Yes?
I was just gonna say, you know, the social, I'm sorry. The social media aspect of it is dangerous, you know, it's not always intelligent conversation nor productive conversation, so we try and really be mindful of what we say in the social media arena. Having talked with the chief, I know that having the type of meeting that you just suggested, he would be very, very interested in that, because that's the kind of meeting where intelligent conversation happens and, and things get resolved. So, with that said, I know he'll be glad to do that.
I have a question. When you say that, that the comments made on social media are dangerous or can be dangerous, do you mean the, for the sheriff to respond, or do you mean the people actually taking the opportunity to express their experience?
I think there's a fine line between, for example, Lily Vasquez, her post was very appropriate. She described exactly what happened to her, and her concerns are real. But then you get into a bunch of people after that chiming in with, I heard this and I heard that, and there was, I think you were to add up the number of people that shared their, their own personal experiences with the number of comments about things that were heard or said.
Okay, okay.
Like third party, there would be very few, a lot less personal experiences versus heard experiences. And that's why I said dangerous, because obviously we wanna hear the personal experiences, because those are real things that happen to those people that are actually posting versus just hearing rumors of alleged misconduct.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I just wouldn't characterize it as, as dangerous, but I understand what you're saying.
When I said dangerous, I meant dangerous for us to respond back.
Okay, okay.
That can add fuel to the fire, and that's not always helpful.
Yeah, okay.
You draw it in, and you gotta let go of your end of the rope, because these people, you know, a lot of people enjoy that, they troll or whatever they call it, where they start it, and then they step back and watch everybody else go at it.
Yeah.
So, okay, so Steve, you'll set up a meeting, and Bill and I'll meet with Jim, and anybody else Jim wants to bring, is there?
I, I just wanted to make a comment, that there's, it's a, it's a difficult, from putting my lawyer's hat on, Fourth Amendment situation, where somebody is innocently walking down the street at night and being encountered affirmatively by a police officer, when all that individual is doing is walking down the street. And if, in fact, that person, it is then determined is under the influence of some illegal substance, being arrested, that's a problem.
Probable cause issues.
Right. Now, I don't know the answer, 'cause I've never, I've never litigated it through the motion practice, if a police officer during the day is just waving at someone and pulls over and says, hi, how you doing, is there anything I can do for you? And in that encounter determines that somebody is under the influence of an illegal substance. Because the officer at that point is not stopping to talk to somebody because it's late at night and it's dark, and they're talking to this person for some reason, but even if they stopped and said, are you okay? You know, it's a fine line, and it's a difficult one, and officers struggle with it all the time. And when people get, get arrested under those circumstances, people like myself struggle with it, too, and judges struggle with it. I just think we need to be assured that it is not a concerted effort in this community, that our police officers, for no other reason than seeing someone walking at night, are stopping those people and then putting them through some sort of a search in an attempt to find out if they are breaking the law. I think that's the most important thing we need to see.
I have a question. Are you going to be speaking directly to the officer involved?
I don't think they will. No, I don't think that's even appropriate.
We're going to talk to the sheriff's office, to James, and he has assured us that he is looking into the matter, and that he's going to then give us information back, and then Bill can raise some of the concerns, like Paul, this idea of profiling, or it could just be one, possibly one new officer who thought they were doing a super job, or it could be somebody that maybe the department's gonna wanna keep a close eye on, but we're not gonna get directly involved in that part of it. We need to talk with the command and make sure that they know that we take these, and our citizens, that we take it seriously, and that there should be an explanation and a follow-up of some sort. No, you know, this, there were two or three issues that were brought up that, that had some credibility, that I think that I'm sure the sheriff would wanna know about, and that's all we're doing. If it appears that we have a callous view towards it, either as a council or as the department, I think we got a problem. But if everybody's talking and things get better, I think the community will appreciate it.
Okay, so you'll be reporting back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because I can't help but notice, look who they picked up. A woman who's very shy, I know her a little bit, very vulnerable, they didn't pick up a white assertive, you know, it's a, it is, you know, I'm looking forward to the investigation.
There should be an explanation for it.
Yeah.
And it may be that it was, you know, bad practice, so that they aren't gonna do it anymore.
The only I can say to that is, just remember, the drugs and alcohol, don't care what color you are, they don't care, they don't care if you're a male or a female, and so it's a difficult, it's difficult at best to even apply anything like that to the conversation, that's all I would, that's all I would say.
I respectfully differ in a little bit in how I see that, but thank you.
Everybody should be sensitive to that, and I, okay.
I'm fine.
Okay, I just wanna say that our event, The Cat That Changed America, was more than sold out, we had to turn people away, and so maybe there'll be Mayor Johnson attended, and was very successful, very educational. So, we'll have a smaller second event in Miners Oaks for those that missed it. And then we printed about several hundred of these brochures, which has the city of Ojai resolution opposing rodenticides, and we will have those available, if it's all right, at City Hall and around town. So, made some progress, I hope. Oh, if you saw in the, in today's Ventura County Star, there was another article about a cougar that successfully crossed, didn't get killed. Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Yeah.
Well, too many of those is gonna kill the fundraising effort for the corridor.
That whole issue was, when I was on VCOG, was a topic that we had presentations on, and, and having bridges with, you know, grass on the top of them for the animals to cross over, because what happens is the species get separated, and then you don't get the diverse, the diversity of the gene pool and all that kinda thing, and I'm sure, I wasn't able to see the movie, but I'm sure that that's what it went into.
Definitely, yeah.
Well, they probably went into the actual, the area that a male cougar actually owns, if you wanna call it that.
Yeah, 200 miles.
Yeah, it's huge.
Yeah.
You have anything, Randy?
No.
Okay, I have just one report. City manager and I met with the superintendent and the chairman of the Board of Education this morning as a follow-up, and it was, I think, a productive meeting, Steve, the, it was conciliatory. The, no, their concern, they expressed here, and they were, they semi-apologized, said it was unfortunate, 'cause nobody wanted to have that kinda conflict, but they felt they got caught short, but they are concerned about the whole concept of us going forward with the designation of landmarking too quickly, and they would like to at least talk with the full council and the full Board of Education, just to see if there's any, any room, I guess, to not, not do it, but not do it at this stage, and they have a strategy that they would like to share with us as to why they think that, you know, some delay, how far did, you have your notes, that they were talking about pushing it into like the fall or November? We would have a meeting, what, early October?
We were, that was the idea, that was their hope, would maybe be to.
They were trying to do, to have that conversation before it goes to the, what do you call it?
Historic Preservation Commission, right.
Preservation Commission, so that all the information, and then when it comes back,
May I speak on that, or?
Sure.
I'm uncomfortable with that for the following reasons. One is, our procedure that is very clear, is that an HPC recommendation then can be appealed by the owner to the council. And it seems to me that we already have built in, in effect, a conversation between council and the school board, if it, we proceed with what we asked for, and that's to go back. and the school board, if it, we proceed with what we asked for, and that's to go back to the HPC, have them properly notice everything, decide what they want to do, deliberate, then they make a recommendation. And what didn't happen, I, perhaps, is that the school board realized, at that point, they can appeal the decision of the HPC before, directly to council. And then it becomes a, an opportunity to discuss. So I'm, I'm not real comfortable with the idea of stopping our review process in this circumstance, because that they, you know, they just want more time. I'm, I'm just not comfortable.
No, I share the same concerns. I, we initiated the process that it go back, and, because they weren't properly noticed.
Steve, would you take a shot at that? Because I don't feel like I did it, did it justice.
Sure, I'll, I'll do my best to explain what I think their, their pitch was. I, I think the, the district was concerned with, perhaps, if the landmarking goes forward, that it takes away the ability of the community, and the district, and the city, and everybody involved, to be able to have a full look at all the options, in terms of what could potentially be done on that property. And I think the school district's position, if I'm communicating accurately, was just that they didn't want to have the landmarking get in front of that, and then perhaps take some options off the table, that at the end of the day, might be something that the community could be more in support of, knowing that we're probably not going to be able to do everything there on that property, or make everybody happy. But perhaps, again, if, the idea was that they just want to be able to have a clean look, I think, to see if there's something out there that will, can be accepted by everybody in the community. And I think there was, the idea was just to try and have that discussion, hear that, put that pitch forward to the council, to see if there was some support, and, and holding off before it went back to the HPC. I don't know if I helped, Johnny.
Yeah, I guess, my initial position or feeling was, is, you know, the cows left the barn, the specter of landmarking is out there, and it will have a dampening effect on people being interested, because it adds one more complexity to the development of the property. But I, I think that the school board would like one, one opportunity to talk in a, in a, you know, just face to face on, you know, the, the landmarking of the grounds that have a skateboard park in there already. They, you know, to sort of narrow the scope of what is being recommended to the council, or at least pause it long enough to see if they could come up with anything that they might be able to present to the city, that would say, you know, that, I don't think anybody over there has the, wants to see the Wilson architecture, which is the one that's really Main Street, to be touched. But they seem to have concerns that, that there may be some flexibility as to what would be proposed by developers, and it's mainly two local groups that have expressed some interest. They just think that if we charge ahead with that, that it may just so dampen the thing that we'll never, they'll never be able to have that conversation, and maybe that's.
I understand, but I guess what bothers me is that right now, we have no recommendation, and that a recommendation from HPC has no legal effect until it gets to us anyway. The, the recommendation can be appealed, and then, but even if it's not appealed, it still comes to us. So.
Correct.
There's no legal binding at all, until it gets to us.
Okay, we do have a recommendation.
No, we don't. We took, we said, go back.
We, no, we, yeah, we remanded it.
Right.
But they did say, you know, if it hadn't been for the notifications and other things, they did indicate, the commission did, that they, that what they thought should be done.
Right, but because of the, the deficiency in the notice, nobody from the school board attended the meeting to, to present public testimony to the HPC. I, I look at it as, the only reason that anybody would not want us to move forward and landmark that property, is so that it could be destroyed in the development, if a, if a proposal came forward to destroy it. That's the only reason.
Well.
If you landmarked it, they'd have to work around that.
Yeah.
Mayor and council.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, when you look at that report, landmark what? Because you could landmark the building.
Right, well, we never got that far.
The attorney. Mayor and council.
The other thing that I want to, I want to ask about is.
Excuse me. This is, well, be, the discussion is okay if you're discussing whether to schedule a joint meeting with the school board or not. Clearly, the matter requires more discussion, so I.
I would be, I would be against that.
So my take on it is, any opportunity to communicate between two bodies is as important as the council and the school board is a win. So, 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 having, having said that, I would be for more dialogue. Now, if there is something that has already been agendized to the HPC, and we can have this dialogue prior to that agendized, agendized meeting, let's do it. If we can't, then I say we proceed the way that we're talking as a body, as a whole. So, but anytime that we have an opportunity to communicate to one another, it's a win for us. It's a win for them, and it's a win for the community, so.
I, I just want to be clear. I, I'm all for communicating with them also, but I don't want to stop the process of it going back to the.
No, I don't think, they weren't even asking for that, they were just wanting to talk with the council, and they would, what, you had a date that you wrote down in you, they were talking about like the first week in October, because we were dark at the.
Correct. Yeah, we were thinking early October, if that was, if, if.
I'm not against that, I'm just against pairing that with delaying the schedule with the HPC.
I think the earliest we could get to HPC would be September, October, so.
But, but just keep in mind, the purpose of the meeting, from their standpoint, is for us to delay it to go to HPC.
And we're not.
Yeah, if that's the purpose of the meeting, I'm not.
Yeah, what is the purpose of the meeting?
And we had talked about HPC.
If it's not to change our direction back to HPC.
And, and I, yeah, I'm not for that.
Understood.
My normal schedule.
Well, I don't think, I don't, that's what Johnny and I just said, I think what we said, if we could have dialogue prior to the HPC meeting.
Why though? What purpose?
Well, you know something? I think giving them an opportunity to, to express their views doesn't hurt us, and ultimately, they're going to have to come and express those views if HPC does decide to landmark it, and then they have the right to appeal it.
Again, they can't landmark it by themselves.
Did you hear, hear what I said?
I understand.
They can make that recommendation, and then they're going to have to come to council. Wouldn't this conversation be better if it was in a, in a uncouncilmatic environment, and we actually had a sit-down, and just let them air out their concerns?
No, I, I.
I, I just don't have a sense that there's something wrong with that.
I don't agree.
I think that the sequence is, as best I can recollect, I'm not holding things in my head as well, I should have taken more notes. I think the idea was, is that if we were to meet with them very early in October, it would be shortly before we have our first meeting in October as a council, we can give whatever direction, or no direction, whatever the council would choose, to the commission, and the, and the commission would be meeting like the next week after that, in which case it doesn't, it wouldn't delay anything beyond that, and the commission would make whatever decision they wanted to make to us, and then we would make whatever decision.
I'm not against the meeting.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just against conditioning the HPC schedule on it.
Yeah.
And, and, how, how does that affect it, if we sit down, and, I don't know what the purpose of this meeting is.
It would depend on how the matter is agendized.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, why do they want to sit down and talk to us for any other purpose than having us change our direction to HPC? What would be the other purpose? Because HPC's already going to get it, they're going to make a decision, and then it's going to come back to us. I think that there's a real problem with us discussing it with them, and then having it come back to us.
Yeah, but it prejudices our test.
Yeah.
The, the whole process, our process. We're supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to hear it, hear the recommendation without prejudice.
And the other thing that I, the other thing I'd like to point out is, the mayor brought them and I, reached out to the school board to meet with them, to discuss options, and we were somatically turned down.
Right.
So now, because we're going to landmark it, all of a sudden they want us?
So here we are again.
We'll schedule the meeting, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, and, and again, I don't think, I don't think we have.
As long as we're not prejudicing anything.
Right.
As, as long as we're not prejudicing anything that would happen at the HPC, and then having it come to us.
The, the way to do that would be to schedule the meeting as a straight discussion. If the joint meeting's agenda for the council did not include the ability, did not include the landmark item, then you couldn't stop the HPC train. The school district would ask for it, but they wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to give them what they wanted.
I don't think they're even going to, would even ask that, I think they.
That would be the way to accomplish what you're seeking, Tom.
And I wouldn't have, and I wouldn't have the meeting under the pretense that we're going to condition something after the, the discussion.
I.
I just want a public dialogue.
Okay. On the broad question.
Yes.
Okay, well.
I would love for them to publicly state that they are in a monetary disarray, that they, that they have a different need than maybe what the communities are.
If, if they're.
I'd love for them to say that publicly.
If they're requesting a meeting with us, for no purpose than to express what they want to do, knowing that we've already sent it back to HPC, and we're not going to change our mind over that, then that's fine, if that's what they want.
Yeah.
Good.
I agree, yeah.
I think we are, we're in agreement with that.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, will you talk with?
Yes, I will.
The member in charge over at the school district.
I'll speak with Mr. Cantwell.
Yeah, and, see, we just, you know.
They're watching this right now, you know.
I know.
I'm with Randy, it doesn't seem like it hurts anything, considering we, as I would say, we, to a degree, unintentionally, we lost the moral high ground when the commission didn't announce or notify the person that owns the property that they were going to do the report on. But that's all.
We're fixing that, so.
Yeah, so we can't go back and change that, but listening to see what, if there's any.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, okay.
We're all together on.
Okay, that's great. Up there, is there anything else? Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I'll go through mine very quickly. No other, nothing else on this item.
Okay. Yeah, your report, we're done.
Thank you. We did file the appeal of the Bentley oil wells, have been in contact with county planning staff, they have not set a date yet. As soon as we are aware of that, we will make you aware as well.
And we'll be, is it appropriate, Mr. Summers, when the appeal date is set, for the council to weigh in with their, their concerns on the things they'd like to see as far as the grounds of the appeal, or not?
If it's on an agenda, sure, or if it's individual council members, sure.
Individual council can, can communicate to the city manager.
Yeah, and the, the, the written appeal with the series of reasons, about six pages of reasons, was already filed.
Right.
If you want to add more, certainly weigh in.
There's no problem in terms of communicating directly to the city manager.
No, no, there's no.
And the date set, and all the documentation.
Right, add to the existing arguments is, is more than lawful.
Okay, thank you.
This morning's paper said Oxnard also filed one on a different issue.
On a different, another, yeah.
Yeah, so quite a march going on throughout the county.
Another oil and gas one?
Casta-Car.
No, a different, a different oil well development.
Oh, yeah.
You got an acre of oil field there, not too far from, from a school.
Right.
Okay, what else you got?
Wanted to briefly just take a moment to, again, apologize to the council and community for the issues that we had with the noticing regarding the landmarking of the last meeting. I've definitely taken steps to address that internally, we'll leave it at that, but again, I apologize for the embarrassment with that. And then lastly, I heard a request from Councilmember Francina, to perhaps have, schedule a future presentation, to hear somebody talk a little bit about the ecology of the valley in relation to water, so I wanted to see if there was support from council to work with the council member, and schedule that at a future date.
Well, it doesn't hurt to get educated, the only problem is, our agenda seems to be getting so full right now.
Right.
Trying to just deal with it, if, if we can figure a way to fit it in.
Well, we'll just say that if we, you know, we, we were doing monthly water meeting, and, and rather than having Angelo, his, you know, a substitute, another speaker beside Angelo.
Okay.
Since we're going to.
You have somebody that, or you want us to.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll give it some thought.
Okay.
I'll put out the word, you know.
I would urge a very constrained presentation time limit.
Yeah, yeah.
Ten minutes is what they're.
Right.
There are people who, I, I know, they do presentations that can be two hours or three minutes. If someone's knowledgeable, they can be, must of course, to say.
What you're suggesting is, is just a counterpoint to what we've been receiving on the drought aspect.
Yeah, because it's just, there's just too much on one, one aspect of it.
Yeah, there's, there's clearly a, a view, connect the plumbing, connect the plumbing, as opposed to sinking and storing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that, it, we don't have a problem with that.
I think you'll enjoy it. What I've learned, what little bit I've learned is absolutely fascinating.
Well, you give Steve some names or something, and we'll put them on.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's good, you know, they, and there are other people on the water advisory groups that are.
Yeah, whatever happened to that water advisory?